Rigstead, the chairman of the Goffstown zoning board of adjustment. Welcome to the July 5, 2011, meeting. The Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and two alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'll have the board introduce, starting with...
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the planning and zoning administrator.
Yella Breck, board member and recording secretary.
Lynn Stewart, alternate.
And Ed Loopy, member.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, we have a few things on our agenda. And for the actions this evening, we have three members present, and one alternate, so Lynn, if you could act as a voting member until deemed otherwise. We'll start off with approval of minutes from the June 7, 2011, meeting. Any comments, motions regarding those minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion to approve. I didn't have any comments, anyone? All those in favor of approving the minutes as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. There you go. 4-0-0. We have two items on our public hearing tonight. The first one is, "The Gosh Albicard, applicant-owner, is seeking a variance and a special exception to allow a small animal processing facility to process animal products for religious purposes. The proposed processing facility will be located within the barn. The variance is required because this facility would be located on a lot that currently has a single-family home. This would be considered a mixed-use project, whereas Section 3.11, Table A6 of the zoning ordinance does not permit dwelling units as part of a mixed-use project in the agricultural district. The special exception is needed because Section 3.11, Table J6 of the zoning ordinance denotes the use of 'facility for processing animal products,' as a use permitted by special exception." The property is located at 83 Joppahill Road, which is map 2, Lot 20, in the agricultural district. This application was continued from the June 7, 2011, meeting. At that June 7, 2011, meeting, we did vote on regional impact. The board did find that it had regional impact, and subsequently, the town notified Derek, sorry, Brian, we notified Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and the town of Bedford, correct?
Correct.
All right. Great. And so, that's why we're back with it tonight, as we decided in the last meeting. Let's see. So, in the staff review, there's a number of items in it, like nine specific items regarding the use, previous court order, previous court order regarding the fact that this is a special exception and a variance that they're seeking, that the proposed processing facility will be incident to a single-family residence, not to a family operations. We have a photograph of the aerial photograph, talking about abutter notifications. We've received a letter from the town of Bedford, planning director, and some information regarding how it was handled last time. All right. Any comment before we hear from the applicant board? Okay. So, who is Mr. Albicard?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Is Mr. Albicard here? Who's speaking? Or just, I guess, who's speaking for the applicant?
I'm Linda Connell of the McLean Law Firm, who is speaking for the applicant tonight, who is here, Nagash Alb Delicar. And I will ask him to speak up if there's anything that I get wrong, but he's asked that I take the main or in speaking for him.
Okay. Well, please have a seat. This is the great seat because you're easily on camera. You can easily be heard by everyone here and also the public that are watching live or on future videocast if they want to watch it. Before, let me ask, you are?
Again, I'm Linda Connell from McLean, Graff, Rollerson, and Middleton Professional Association, a law firm in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Okay. And I wanted just, one thing I pointed out in the introductions and instructions, that normally, we have a five-member board. We see we only have four members right now. That to, just repeat, just to make sure, for an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. You can, an applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application.
We have discussed it, and our client wishes to proceed.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for pointing that out, though.
So, with that, what is the applicant wishing to do?
Both seek a variance this evening and a special exception in order to have a facility for processing animal products. And again, as you read in the notice, the property affected is map 2, Lot 20, on Joppahill Road, that's number 83 Joppahill Road. And what I have put up on the pedestal is both the zoning map...
I'm going to walk over here, too.
And the camera will follow. Andrew has very good job of that.
To get some identification of the property, this is the lotline adjustment plan that was approved by the town of Goffstown Planning Board back in August 2004. The property had been two lots, but the then-owner came in to reconfigure the lots because not infrequently, sometimes when one owner owns more than one parcel, the house managed to get built in part on the lotline. So, before selling it, Brenda Clapp got this lotline adjustment plan where she increased the lot that had the house already constructed on it with an attached barn and a garage, and basically made it into a lot of over 4.2 acres. And this also has over 400 feet of frontage on Joppahill Road, as certified this plan was done by true engineering. And again, this lot that is tax map 2, Lot 21, is, again, a lot with over, about 400 feet of frontage. If you read the map, it's 50 plus 207 and another 157. So, this lot has more than 400 feet of frontage on Joppahill Road as well, and it's 12.89 acres. And your tax assessor records show at this point that there is, there are no improvements to this particular lot, and it's currently in current use, according to the assessment records. And what is odd about this section of town is that the lotline of this Lot 21 does not follow the town line, even though it's quite close, but the lots in the subdivision on the other side of this lot have little bits of pieces in Goffstown. So, if you look at the tax assessor records for Joppahill, you'll see a number of small parcels that say "off Joppahill," and that's what they are, is literally the back end of these lots that are primarily in Bedford, but they have little slivers of land in Goffstown as of the way the town line was set there is against property lines in years past. That probably would make a good story going back to research. But in any event, that's where we have a number of residential neighbors who are not abutters, who are in Bedford, but own a little bit of land in Goffstown. But there is this parcel of land going around our client's property that, at this point, is undeveloped, is the agricultural district. Above the property is the Finney property that is subject to a conservation easement. Across the street is the Tar Wildlife Refuge property. And I thought it was helpful, and I do have extra copies of these to hand around, to really point out on your zoning map that this property, again, is right down at the bottom of the map, right next to Goffstown. But again, it's, our client's property does not abut Goffstown. It's got this other lot that wraps around it.
Bedford.
Yes. It's entirely within Goffstown. There's another property, and this zoning map really shows that configuration created by this plan. And right across Joppahill Road, again, is the Wildlife Refuge, and then one of the parcels that Mrs. Finney conveyed in conservation easement in years ago, in 1989, as well as the large tract that's 59 acres, and I've got copies of these plans to give to you, that, again, is just north of our client's parcel. And then, there is another Finney parcel, again, within the conservation district. And again, why I mention those parcels in particular is that they're very large parcels. The conservation easement describes it as a total of 140 acres. And back in 1989, Mrs. Finney granted a conservation easement to the Society for Protection of Forests, not only to preserve that property as for forestry uses, but also to permit agricultural uses, including animal products. So, unlike a lot of your, most of Goffstown is in the residential district, and I think sometimes people forget that. The zoning map shows how despite that, many lots have been carved to be residences within the agricultural district. But this particular corner of Goffstown still has the benefit of some very large tracts, including ones both north and across the street, you know, directly across the street from this parcel is the Wildlife Refuge, but catty-corner from it is the large parcel, one of the large parcels of land that have been dedicated to both forestry and agricultural use. So, this area of town does have the benefit, not only of the agricultural district in name, but real efforts to still preserve agricultural uses in this area.
And again, that's by way of reference and background, because what we're here tonight for is to talk about and apply for both a variance and a special exception. Again, I'm going to just pass a few things around. We've made extra copies of this zoning map, so everyone will have it in mind. Why we're here is seeking a variance first is because for this particular residential use, which is a lawful use in the agricultural district, Section 3.11, Table J6 provides specifically as a permitted use by special exception, a facility for processing animal products. And that special exception application had been brought before, but not decided by this board because of the determination that a variance was also needed as a first step, because in your table of uses, Section 11, Table A6, provides that if there's a mixed use, there is no provision in, if you have a primary residential use of a property, which is what this property is used primarily for right now, that there is no provision for a mixed use in the agricultural district on that table. And so, that's why we're here, seeking a variance first. But I just want to make it clear that what we're ultimately trying to do is not a use that's not permitted in the agricultural district. It is a use permitted in the agricultural district. And why I want to emphasize that is that I realize that a facility for processing animal products is something that I can, I have read the past minutes from 2008 of testimony before this board and can see that it is a subject that arouses a lot of emotion, that there are many people today that don't like to think about where our meat comes from, and there's many people that object to meat processing and are vegetarians as a result, and may take it even one step further. So, I would just query and make sure I, that the board is thinking about that this is not your ordinary application where you only have to think about, does anybody have any position personally that would make them disqualified to rule on this application? All the usual reasons of personal interest or family, and the categories that we're all familiar with of having prejudices for race or religion. But here, there's an extra element that if someone had that objection that some people do to any killing of animals to produce meat, then I would ask any board member with those convictions to step aside in this hearing, because, again, this is a lawful use under your zoning ordinance. So, we certainly want to talk to tonight, because it is a permitted use by special exception, both about the variance it needs and also the special exception that it needs. We recognize that the zoning ordinance wants to ask the questions of, is this an appropriate use for this particular lot within the agricultural district? And that's why we're here before the zoning board of adjustment, rather than just the planning board.
Right. Okay.
So, we acknowledge that, but trust that we have...
We know why you're here.
Good, good. And we have all people here who can deal with the topic, which, you know, like you say, we'll try to respect people's sensibilities, but it is part of agriculture that we meat-eaters that are left still need. And it is, you know, becoming to become more of a recognized need locally, because one of the things that we've become concerned with is the ability to eat and grow local. And the movement to eat and grow local right now in New Hampshire is being somewhat frustrated, and not just in New Hampshire, by the lack of facilities to process meat. And just by way of example, I've copied a couple of articles. And again, first of all, I realize I haven't drawn out the lotline. I've got extra copies of the lotline adjustment plan, so people can have it in front of them. And everyone from the New York Times to the local Nashua Telegraph is writing about the need for more facilities to process animals if we're really going to be able to return to full-fledged agriculture in New Hampshire, New England, in areas that are not well-serviced by such facilities. We also have a local farmer here who will also testify about the need for such facilities. That's Brenda Body, and I'll ask her to testify a little bit later. And just by way of backdrop, to be able to have this facility in New Hampshire, as remarked by the reporter in the Nashua Telegraph article, New Hampshire, at this point, doesn't really have any longer meat inspectors to conduct its own meat inspections, that the state of New Hampshire, at this point, relies entirely on the federal system to basically control how such a meat facility should be operated. And our client has met with the agricultural commissioner to basically confirm that that's the regulation that he needs to look to in order to properly run his facility. And again, in order to give a little background in the record and our client's research that, and his intent here is to operate a facility that meets the federal Department of Agricultural requirements for a facility. And that does require inspections both before and after of the livestock and the processed For the record, again, I thought it would be helpful to see the level of detail that those regulations go into to make sure that, in fact, a facility is operated properly.
Is there best management practices?
Yes.
Okay. So, there may not be a regulatory requirement, but there's best management practices, the state of New Hampshire?
No, I'm sorry, not with this, within the state of New Hampshire. I'm saying, the regulations themselves require standards of practice in order to meet their goals, and you can, if you read the detail of them, it's the same general concept of best standard practices. And again, those are always evolving, and our client intends to stay on top of that. And just to give a little bit of, again, big-picture perspective, I thought it was also helpful to look, since the board had decided that this facility, given its location so close to the Bedford town line, could have some regional impact, I thought it would be helpful to really look at the Bedford zoning map and the Bedford regulations on what is a permitted use across the town line in Bedford. And what I found was that this area of Bedford, not unlike Goffstown, has a lot of resident, what they call it, the reverse, it's residential agricultural district. It does not provide for a processing facility for animal products. It does provide for livestock being raised and kept. The exception made is a prejudice against hogs. You can't commercially raise hogs in the residential agricultural district of Bedford. Having been a farm girl myself in my early childhood, there is some basis, in my opinion, for that prejudice. The smells are sometimes harder to do, to deal with. Fortunately, our client has no problem with providing for a condition that there will be no hogs or pigs on his property. They're not meat that would be suitable for halal meat with the Muslim faith. So, that is an easy condition to live with and will help address that issue. And a further backdrop is the enabling section of our RSAs adopted by the New Hampshire legislature. Because New Hampshire has been changing, we have, particularly in southern New Hampshire, sometimes we feel like a bedroom community, rather than the old agricultural roots that those of us who grew up here were much more a part of. But part of the zoning enabling statutes of New Hampshire are still to give emphasis to those agricultural roots and to try to encourage agricultural uses. And really, still, set that out as one of the principal purposes of zoning. And again, I'm going to give you the site to 672, Section 1, Section 3B, that basically ends with agricultural activities are a beneficial and worthwhile feature of the New Hampshire landscape and shall not be unreasonably limited by use of municipal planning and zoning or by unreasonable interpretation of such powers. And again, I applaud Goffstown for still having within its agricultural district this as a permitted use, but we are here because of the special exception need and the variance need.
Right. And the variance is that it's a mixed-use project, right?
Right. Exactly. And what I have also given you in advance, that Brian nicely passed out for me, is that I tried to provide to you, I'll just find my own copies here, a proposed vote on both the variance and the special exception in order to really outline the number of conditions that we are basically proposing to help assure that this will both be a reasonable use under the variance standard and also meet all the conditions for a special exception, so you can be assured that this particular use on this particular piece of land will be an appropriate use and will not be a use that's so intense under any standard that would make it objectionable under the standards of your ordinance for a special exception. So, moving first through the variance application, because, again, procedurally, that's the first step in order to operate this facility in the way that Mr. Adelicader would prefer. Because as you can see in that lotline adjustment plan, where they started out with the house on the property line, when they created a 4.2-acre parcel, the house is still rather centrally located. We've got enough frontage to do a subdivision, but it would not be, you know, a straight two rectangles because of the location of the existing house. And the benefit of not subdividing the property is that it really allows us to meet the spirit of the ordinance and the purpose of the ordinance better by bringing that use into, closer to the house of the Adelicards. And we think that that really evidences their intent to try to limit the impact that this use could have on any of the neighboring properties, because, again, this property right now is undeveloped. This is a nice field on the other side, subject to the conservation easement. There is a reserved right in that conservation easement deed where a lot could be subdivided out here for a single-family residence. Again, it would have to be a residence consistent with the remaining use of the property for agriculture and forestry. So, our preference would be basically to be fair to everyone and also to emphasize the intent of our client to operate a facility that he and his wife and his three young daughters will enjoy living by and will not be disturbed by. And their willingness to have it close to their house, they want to be seen as an expression of their intent to operate this property, I mean, this facility, properly. They're not looking to create a nuisance. They would be the first ones to suffer from a poor operation of this facility. So, what they're looking at now, this, what I'm pointing to now, is the Robert Todd conceptual plan that he did that was submitted back in 2008. And the original plan was to, this is actually, right now, an existing three-car garage that's a separate structure. But again, this was shown on this 2004 plan. There's also, and so the... There's also, and so the plan in 2008 was to come forward and add to that existing garage and basically convert it to the main facility for processing meat. And to use a pen, an outdoor pen area closer to, again, beyond the buffer required, but still on this side of the property to have the animals come in, come through a chute to this facility where the animals would be maintained outside awaiting processing. What our client would like to do now is really take advantage of the fact that there's already an attached barn on the backside of his house that he could use easily for bringing the animals in, to store the live animals. Again, his intent is not to keep them for a long time, but again, wants to minimize noise that anyone beyond the property could hear. So the idea is to use this part of the barn for actually bringing animals into the property initially. And instead of coming out the front, which would be closer to this property to the north, to the Finney property, that he would like to, again, explore going out towards the house. So basically, he could probably eliminate the need for this extra driveway, potentially expand, expand the existing driveway a little bit. So the traffic would just be coming in, again, more centrally in the lot, taking advantage of the existing barn for just bringing livestock in and then expanding the barrage facility. And that's why I say there's some confusion because there's both an existing attached barn that he would propose to use and the traditional barn use of having livestock in it, which I understand that the zoning ordinance now has been amended to clearly allow the keeping and raising of livestock as an accessory use to a primary residential facility. So if he were just going to do that alone at this point, that barn would allow him to do it. But what he is looking for is the additional use of the processing facility that does still require the variance in order to have that use on the primary, with the residence as the primary residential use. And the basic argument for a variance is that the house is already here. You can't do just a traditional subdivision, you know, down the middle of this property that's plenty big enough, has plenty of frontage. You'd have to do something oddly configured and you would create a property line between the house and the existing barn and this structure that he wants to be able to convert to the animal processing facility. And that would have the effect of, in effect, pushing the use to the north. And again, where there's no residential house to the north right now, there could be in the future. And he's really looking to be fair to all of the neighbors in trying to contain this use in a way that it's closest to him, where he can keep his finger on everything that goes on and making sure that there aren't unintended emanations of noise and odors and views from his, the use of the property for this means. And it will actually accomplish the purpose of the ordinance of creating a buffer in terms of looking at the special exception by not requiring the variance here. And presumably, the intent of that ordinance to say that you can't have those as two primary uses on one property is basically to protect the residential use from the non-residential use. But in this case, it would be just an inconvenience to the owner. The owner and his wife plan to be employees of this business. It will be convenient to them to have it close rather than having to move the activity and the garage expansion more in this direction rather than in the direction of their existing home and barn.
So you've said it twice now regarding about subdivision of property, but is that realistic in the fact, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, if you're to draw a line, or can you draw a line that would then meet all existing setback requirements in property uses, that it would be free from any variances or special exceptions?
Again, I'm not a surveyor. I'm just saying that when I'm, I peruse both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulation. And again, we've got the acreage, we've got the frontage. From what I see, you've got to maintain the frontage back 100 feet. And because the house is already back so far, you know, this is 300 and, yeah, so we're way beyond, but what, but you're supposed to have 100 by 180 box for the building area. And what I'm most concerned with is, again, you've got a 25-side yard setback, and if you put that right between the house and the garage, again, just eyeballing it, it looks to me like it might be possible. But, you know, with an actual survey, we might be back here for a variance on that buffer, I mean, that, that's right, I mean, the setback requirement. And with the joint ownership and the use and the intent to really operate this as a family business, that's really, you know, an effort to pay for that surveying to see if we could come up with a consolidated lot, really would not serve any public purpose or any public benefit. And that's why we're asking for the variance. And that I think we have the physical hardship here because, you know, this house is what he purchased, constructed, it's already there. And like you say, the prior owner corrected the lot line so it wouldn't be sitting on the lot lines, but obviously didn't contemplate this further use, which we would like to do. And again, but from a policy perspective, as represented in your zoning ordinance, he's got the acreage and the frontage to have those two uses. So I think there it's meeting, meeting the spirit of the ordinance and the purpose of the ordinance. But with this existing house location, it would, you know, result in oddly configured lots at best and the, you know, need to potentially push to the north the use for the processing facility, where we would prefer to keep it as close to the house as possible. Because that would just, again, add unnecessary expense, but more importantly, from a perspective of wanting to maintain as much a buffer as possible from your butters on all three sides, he'd rather have it close in to the existing house and barn. And if you, and I've really laid out in the findings section how I would propose that you vote to find that we have met the standards for the grant of the variance. Because again, the variance that's needed is just for having two, one lot for both uses rather than having two lots. And that they are both permitted uses respectively in the agricultural district as set forth in Table 3.11, Table A1, and J6. And again, the spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice. Again, we can't see any public benefit for requiring that subdivision, which, you know, again, would take additional survey work and potentially might still need a variance with regard to needing some requirement and would impose on them an inconvenience.
Let me ask you, before we move on to the next item in the variance criteria, so you talked about distances and setbacks and acreage, lot size and stuff. What is your interpretation of the zoning ordinance, the fact that the town does not allow the mixed use of a residential and non-residential use in agricultural district? Why does the town not allow that?
That I'm not sure I have an answer for. It's in your zoning ordinance, it's in that table. Again, you know, that, before I got involved, was litigated and is really a decided issue by the New Hampshire Supreme Court that we need the variance, so...
Correct. But I'm saying why that specific zoning ordinance, I'm not saying why that has to, why you have to meet that zoning ordinance. I agree that that has to be addressed. Question is, why did Goffstown have that? What does that zoning ordinance mean? What does Goffstown gain by having that zoning ordinance in place? That's something that we have to decide in this case.
Exactly.
It's case by case, but do you have an opinion why it exists and therefore then why it doesn't apply to this case?
Again, I'm thinking that it has to have other things in mind. I would think that somewhat the opposite would be the concern. I noticed in the letter that was attached to your staff report from Rick Sawyer, the planner in Bedford.
You did see that, good.
Yes, I did see that. And one of his concerns was, you know, how can we be sure that this isn't going to be subdivided off and sold separately as an independent business? That he was sort of assuming that would be more objectionable, that having it attached to the residence in terms of one property would assure that a residential owner was tied to that business and had a vested interest in making sure it was run in a way that wouldn't be objectionable to residential use because the residential users, owners, would be right there. So I can only see that as having a benefit. So I'm, I must say, I haven't really figured out or thought of a reason why Goffstown might have wanted this agricultural use to be on a separate lot.
Or at least not allowed to be mixed use.
Yeah, at least not allowed to be mixed use. And again, I'm, I'm assuming it may be, you know, historically in part, that mixed use has come to mean more typically commercial and residential uses together in some sort of a village district where that's sort of the new smart growth and that agricultural uses just were not the traditional village mixed use. So in, in creating that table, there just wasn't any thought to, that you are trying to encourage that sort of mixed use development with both residences and commercial uses in an agricultural zone. I mean, your master plan speaks of the desire to have smart growth and to focus most of the growth of the town that is not agricultural, you know, along the main corridors where you've got the designated residential districts, the commercial areas and the industrial areas. And to try to stop the pattern that's been, you know, prevalent in the past, I'm not sure how many decades, of scattering the uses all over town in terms of residential development. So that would be my only explanation of how that happened to not be within the chart of checking the box that it was permitted in the agricultural district because whoever worked on that, putting that, you know, table together at some time may have been focused on the commercial and residential together, not the agricultural and residential.
Okay. And I'm not going to try to hold you up on the presentation here so much, but I have one other question that, more towards the, what we're looking at. You probably talked to size the operation more in the special exception. In the size aspect, in the variance, we're looking at the criteria of multiple, essentially principal uses. Was there a discussion with the town, Planner Brian Rosen's case, of, you know, it's a smaller operation, it's more equivalent to, would be considered an accessory use, although it's not an accessory use in the Table 3.12, I believe it is? Is there, is there a, and a size in mind that required it to like a principal use? And that's the criteria you had to seek variance from?
Again, that was a decision of the Supreme Court saying it was a principal use and wasn't provided as an accessory use. And it was not a traditional accessory use without being named as an accessory use. But what we've done in proposing a vote on the variance is basically to incorporate the same conditions that we would accept on a special exception to make sure that the use fits the size of the lot to also apply to the variance. Because again, it does speak to that issue of, in fact, it is accessory to the main house, which is much larger than this proposed use. The house will still dominate the lot. And that, you know, we are talking about, in fact, a small facility, which is the proposed minimum size that it takes to get approved by the Department of Agriculture for producing USDA-grade meat. Because again, our client wants to produce meat that's both halal, lawful meat for Muslims that meets all the Muslim traditions, and we have somebody here qualified to speak about that. But he also intends to meet all the USDA requirements as well. And he understands that the minimum size they require is the 1,500 square feet for our facility. So that's really why, that's what he's proposing because he wants basically the smallest facility to Mitch, you know, meet that niche market and to be a use that is compatible both with his residential use on the property and the potential for a residential use of his butters and acknowledging that there are residential users down in Bedford, even though, you know, they're a property away. His intent is to have a use that they can all live with.
Okay. Please proceed.
And again, substantial justice, I can't find any public benefit of having two lots, as I pointed out, that Bedford was actually concerned with the potential subdivision and sale of the meat processing facility separately. By having it allowed by variance as one property will assure it's either continuity as a family business or, you know, going out of business and reverting back to just a residential And again, we, the requirement that the value of the surrounding properties not be diminished really should be judged by reference of, is it preferable for those surrounding properties to have two lots with two distinct uses or one lot with them combined? I don't think that you can consider evidence that they would prefer to not have any meat processing facility at all, that they think that that may affect their property values just per se by itself. I think that that's an unreasonable expectation. When you buy property, you buy what's permitted by zoning, not just what is used and properties at the time that you buy it. And so that's why I think we can meet the requirement that we do not diminish the value of the surrounding properties and that in fact, combining the uses on a single lot will help us concentrate the two uses in a way that will create more buffer for the And again, we've tried to include within the conditions of operations, further assurances that it will be a limited use. We've proposed hours of operation, which again, because of the need for federal inspectors, that helps assure that your hours of operation are going to be reasonable because you have to conform to their availability. So we are proposing Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. Again, no pigs will be processed, raised or kept on the property. We suggest that additional, every screening, if you look at the shot from, I think it's probably from Yahoo, and the staff report shows that there are many deciduous trees, that that was obviously taken at a time of year when the leaves were not on the trees. If you go up there right now, it's very hard to see anything onto our client's property from Joppahill Road or from Brookdale Road. from Joppa Hill Road or from Brookdale Road because there are many deciduous trees. But it is appropriate to add some evergreen screening and we'd be happy to do that and we are suggesting that that might be a detail that would be more appropriate to planning board site plan review. But it's certainly something that might, this board might want to flag as appropriate.
And do you believe that we would flag that as appropriate because that there would be either noise, smell, runoff, any of those things that would affect neighbors? Not necessarily just the property, but actually humans in a house or something?
Right. We're certainly hoping that would be minimal. And again, we're going to go through more detail on how we're going to make sure that those are minimized or eliminated.
Okay.
So we are going to address those. And again, that's why, in some ways, even though we've got two different applications here, I see them dovetailing because of the unnecessary hardship standard is that not only do we have a physical hardship because of the location of that existing house on the property, the manner of the location, but also the ultimate use that we propose is reasonable. And part of the reasonableness of that use is assured by the conditions that we're willing to accept to that use. And that's why I would propose, in effect, moving on in the requirements for a variance to really focus on the appropriateness of this use for this particular lot, which is really dictated by the special exception standard.
Before you do that, I'm going to ask if the board has any questions specifically to the criteria of the variance before we get too far off the track.
That's fine.
Because there are some questions that are unique to variance. Anyone?
I have a number of questions, but they're mostly going to be on the special exception aspect.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm going to ask, hardship is addressed in variance and not addressed in the special exception. And one of the first question to hardship is, tell me about this property. Why is it unique in its setting and that the zoning ordinance doesn't apply, realistically, it doesn't apply to this property? What's unique about this property?
I think what's unique about this property is that it has a large, valuable, pre-existing house centrally located on it. So to, if you were going to most reasonably and simply subdivide this property and meet the zoning requirements for two-acre zone in the agricultural, or two-acre minimum in the agricultural district, the simplest thing would be to simply carve it into two rectangles. And if you look at either the TODD Plan or the Lot Line Adjustment Plan, you could see that line would basically go through the pre-existing house. And that is existing, is being used, would create a lot of economic waste and hardship. It's a physical structure. It is part of the premises as improved at this point. So that is a physical hardship created by that structure that's pre-existing to make a variance a much more reasonable alternative to subdivision. Because, again, that would impose a separation of the house from the new proposed use, which, again, from, in terms of space devoted to use, is accessory, certainly with respect to structure, more of this structure is a residence than will be devoted to the animal processing facility and, you know, the pre-existing barn that is already there. So that's what the physical hardship is and that makes this property unique from, you know, if we were dealing with an undeveloped property and laying this out in conformance with zoning ordinance with the intent to try to have these two different uses.
That's the first. I've been on the zoning board not a long time, a little over two years, and that's probably the first time I've heard an applicant basically claim that the uniqueness is, or the relief is, I have to subdivide. Usually it's something about that specific piece of property itself, you know, it's new. It's a, the logical argument I'm going to have to wrap my noodle around to figure that out because it's, I'm not going to say it's typical because there's no typical in any of the cases we hear. So, hmm.
But I think it is clearly part of the physical layout of this land at this point. That is not just a mobile home to be readily moved. It's a, you know, substantial house that is physically there.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Even if you were to subdivide, however, you would still be back here for a special exception.
That's right.
Correct? You're not talking about something that's permitted by right in an agricultural.
That's right.
Zone, you'd still have to get a special exception, even if there were a subdivision.
That's right. And that would put us through the additional hurdle of going to the planning board first for a subdivision without any assurance that we had the special exception because if the variance were denied, that would be, you know, the way we would have to go. And we might be back here, like I say, with survey work done, finding there was yet another variance still needed.
Okay. All right. I'll probably revisit it at some point, but go ahead, please speak, continue.
And again, winding up the argument on the variance application and really tying it into the next step of the special exception is that the use is a reasonable one, that, again, it's lawful, it's as a special exception on its separate lot. There is the ability to apply the special exception standard to make sure that it is appropriate for this particular lot. But it is a lawful use. There's also a public need for it that I think is recognized of people wanting to eat local and encourage local farming. And I also want to point out that this is important to our client's Muslim faith. Eating halal meat, or meat that is lawful, is part of the dietary requirements of his faith. I've also copied for you that I'll give out. It's the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, basically prohibits a governmental agency from implementing a land use regulation that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person or assembly unless it is fulfilling a compelling government interest. And what we're proposing here is that we think, and we're in a zone that permits it, the zoning ordinance grants the zoning board of adjustment to be able to impose appropriate conditions. And that's what we're asking for, to be able to both assure the abutters, the town, that this will be run in an appropriate manner, but that the town also keep in mind the importance of this decision to the faith of the applicant and the desire to have that ability to produce halal meat.
Okay. So are you referencing a specific criteria?
Yes.
In our loop that we are, would be in violation of if we denied this?
Only if you applied something in a way that was not furthering a compelling governmental interest. Again, we accept and ourselves propose a number of conditions that we think would be appropriate. It would be only something that was not furthering an identified important governmental interest in trying to prohibit that use that we could have a problem with under that federal law.
Okay.
But it certainly our hope that there's room to meet both. And then, again, where I see the two standards overlapping somewhat is part of unnecessary hardship is not only the unnecessary physical hardship to trying to comply with the zoning ordinance, but also that the ultimate use proposed is a reasonable one. And that, I think, ties into the special exception standard in your zoning ordinance because your zoning ordinance, in effect, is saying this animal processing facility use, if it meets our special exception standards. And those are really found at 15.3.2.1, which first refers to other supplemental standards contained in Section 3.1, contained in the zoning ordinance. And the only supplemental standard I found was at Section 3.11, Table J6, which references Section 5.5 that requires a 100-foot setback from an agricultural building from a residential district.
You may want to reference the 2010, excuse me, the amended March 8, 2011 copy of the zoning ordinance because that paragraph has been amended. It's been amended.
I missed that.
Specifically. 100 feet is no longer in there.
That's correct.
Oh, it's not in there at all?
So I noticed that in the original application by the applicant, and I reviewed it prior to this meeting. And that was specifically referenced. And it was that way when it was presented two years ago.
I noted the other changes, but missed that, that that had been eliminated. So then we're back, basically, to the requirements of 15.3.2.1, first being that it's consistent with the master plan. And again, your master plan gives a lot of emphasis to wanting to have future smart growth and concentrating residential uses in the residential district rather than scattered in the more remote agricultural district areas of the town. This is a more remote area of Goffstown that is the agricultural district that still has large tracts of land. It's right next to the conservation district, which also has large tracts of land. And again, I brought copies of the conservation easement and plan that were prepared for Eileen Finney and her, what appears to be a gift from the transfer tax stamps on the original conservation easement deed. But what she did for the town and the future of Goffstown was help assure that this corner of Goffstown at least would have the benefit of a conservation easement that would help keep it both forested and for agricultural purposes. And what the map shows is literally, I'll put one of them up here. This 56-acre parcel is right to the north of our client's parcel. This is across the street is 31 acres. This is across Mountain Road is 35 acres and backs up on land that's described in the deed as being the Mount Unka Munich Conservation Easement area. So not only does this area of town have the zoning, it also has this overlay of conservation easement area that backs into what the town has done itself that basically provides for both forestry and agricultural use in this area going forward. So this particular part, you know, area of town has an additional assurance of staying quieter and less developed of potentially new residential uses than other areas of town might enjoy. But again, your master plan seems to express a desire to go in the direction of smart growth to try to encourage more concentrated development rather than more scattered development.
Can you tell me what principle that is? I'm looking at the Goffstown master plan update dated October 2006, and in that smart growth, there's eight of them, eight principles. Do you have that reference?
I don't have it right in front of me. I should have copied that as well.
Yeah, that's, it's probably principle number one, but I'll let you make that decision. At some, you don't have to answer right now.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt for one thing. Back on Section 5.5, the change that was made to the zoning ordinance, I just want to make sure that we all realize that that paragraph was not fully deleted, it was changed. The reference to the 100 feet was removed, but I would like to maybe read what that now states.
Sure.
It's, well, Section 5.5.1 is the applicable paragraph under 5.5 for this, for this application. And it states, "The raising and keeping of livestock and poultry shall be conducted in accordance with the best, with best management practices adopted by the Commissioner of Agriculture, Markets, and Food, and with federal and state laws, regulations, and rules." So, just for the record.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And again, other factors in your master plan that I noted were the concern with the visual character of your roads and Joppa Hill Road. And again, this stretch of Joppa Hill Road is a dirt road that's very rural in appearance. Our client's property, basically, you see the mailbox and the number 83 in the driveway and you basically, at this time of year, see a forested lot and see very little. Again, we are proposing a condition that in, you know, the site plan review process, that the deciduous tree and shrub cover be supplemented by additional evergreen shielding. Because, again, we're respectful of that visual rural character of Joppa Hill Road, which our client enjoys as well. I also saw there was a provision encouraging a shared commercial driveway. Again, we're looking at not creating a new driveway entrance into Joppa Hill Road and using that one driveway. And that that will be conducive to not making a big change in Joppa Hill Road. And again, even though this is not a traditional home occupation, and I'm not suggesting that it is, in fact, it will be the occupation of both the applicant and his wife. And one of the concerns I read in your master plan is that Goffstown would like to encourage more jobs that, that would occupy its residents. It was an extremely low number of people who actually have the chance to work here as composed to both, you know, living here but working somewhere else. So this would meet that goal of providing some employment to them right on their own property in Goffstown. And again, it's our position that the size of the approved facility and frequency of its use, as limited by the conditions that we're proposing, will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood, given its location and the character of the neighborhood, given its location in an undeveloped area in the agricultural district, and in that close proximity to the conservation open space district with a wildlife refuge directly opposite the property, and a conservation easement area for agricultural and forestry uses, both bordering the north and across the street from that parcel, and again, going north from there adjoining the town conservation And again, the zoning district in Bedford is a residential agricultural district that butts up against the agricultural district in Goffstown and does permit the raising of livestock and poultry, with the exception of prohibiting commercial hog raising. And we are proposing a condition excluding pigs. And again, the size we're asking for is the minimum 1,500 square feet in order to be a USDA-approved facility. We're trying to keep it on a concentrated area of the lot to maximize the buffer. We're willing to try to add the evergreen screening as much for privacy and not changing the look and feel of the neighborhood. In addition, we've also noted that, that no signage will be used to identify the facility's presence on the property. Another condition is that no retail sales of animal products to the public will be made on the property. Again, we're not looking to bring the public to this site for any kind of retail transactions. There will be, obviously, delivery of animals and taking the meat product away, as well as one of the other conditions that we're proposing that's different from, the Todd Plan had assumed that there would be a use of an onsite affluent area for waste from the facility itself. And there was questions raised in the 2008 public hearing on that, and our client's done further research and found that that can be avoided altogether by using an above-ground holding tank, that the drain from the facility goes to, so there isn't any increase in the domestic sewage other than the restrooms that will be a part of the facility. That sewage, the domestic waste from the restrooms, will go into the onsite septic system, but any other wastewater from the facility itself will go into an above-ground holding tank. And he has been in communication with the Department of Environmental Services about the type of tank that might be used and the permitting requirements for that. And what we also have is a typical, and this is not intended to be an exact replica of how our client would construct the facility, but is intended to be an example of what goes into a basic animal processing facility. And an important feature to note is the refrigeration to control odors, both in the oafal room and in the room for other waste products that will be taken away. In addition to the cooling room for the, the cut and wrapped meat gets cooled, but so do the oafals, and so do the other parts of the animal that will be used for purposes other than eating are still cooled as a means to cut down any kind of smell. So that's an important feature that I don't think at least came out in the record that I have reviewed from the prior hearing.
Let me address one question, and I'd like to get into this in more detail after, but what you're saying is there will be some sort of refrigerated storage onsite, both for the processed meat itself after it has been slaughtered and butchered, and some sort of a separate facility. And this is one of my other questions regarding the 35% to 40% of the animal carcass that's pelt, the other parts of the animal that are not suitable for eating or processing, those things will be stored refrigerated until a rendering firm or someone comes and removes them from the site. Is that correct?
We will.
Is my understanding correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It will be moved within 24 hours.
And the idea is, and I think there were also questions before whether there was an intent to bury any of that waste on the property, and the answer is no. That the only waste that would be on the property would be, you know, the typical manure that goes with animals, that there is an intent to have a facility such as Bob Todd depicted of a roofed structure, where I think he proposed three-foot walls surrounding it to give an area for cleaning up manure until it could be shipped off at some point. And there's certainly a demand these days for manure that can be used for fertilizer.
But that would only be for the manure and not for the other byproducts?
Exactly.
Of the processing, correct?
That's right. Those kinds of byproducts would stay in the facility and be treated in a manner that would reduce odors. In fact, the other thing I have for you on odors is our client's been busy researching what is, you know, the most effective cleaner available. And again, his intent is to follow best practices, as just read by Brian Rose in the new part of the ordinance. And again, as technology changes, there can always be better back, best practices are always developing. But he has been pleased, and he has shared with the Department of Environmental Services, which they seem to see, think it looks like it is a usable product, that's an environmentally friendly product for cleaning, but one that's supposed to be also highly effective on smells. That description includes here one where you could literally take fish or meat and clean it and not refrigerate it. I wouldn't, you know, again, that's not what we're looking to do, but that, at least in the claims of the product, is that it's so effective that it could take away the smell of, that would otherwise come from decaying meat or fish, which seems pretty amazing to me.
But this would be the kind of product that would probably be used in the wash-up and the cleaning after the killing shift. Again, I've done some significant amount of research looking at the products as here, and in order to meet the standard, there has to be a washing after the animal is processed. This is something that would end up presumably in that holding tank you're talking about.
That's right.
That would be the gray water that would come from that process then, correct?
Correct. And Mr. Abdelfattar is also looking at the possibility of trying to recycle some of that gray water for cleaning purposes. Again, there would be, need to be two sources of water, obviously, for the difference between cleaning the, the animal and the meat, as against cleaning the facility that might lend itself to use of gray water, because again, he wants to be environmentally as, you know, modern as he can be in using new methods as they become available.
And if I may, one more, and if I'm getting too much into the, the detail, Mr. Applicator has his well-tested determine whether it produces an adequate flow for the amount of water. The stuff that I've seen in the research that I've done says something on the average of 250 to 300 gallons per thousand pounds of live kill is as well adequate, or would he have to be importing water to meet those needs?
I don't think you've had the well-tested at this point, but again...
I mean, in terms of just flow and volume available, is the volume going to be available to meet the processing need?
I mean, that would obviously be a requirement of the improvements where, and again, the existing well location and the way the property is situated, it gives a large area in the front of the lot to dedicate to a well radius, as shown in the Bob Todd Plan, to make improvements of the well if that were needed. But at this point... Correct me if I'm wrong, have you had that tested yet in terms of pressure and availability?
Not lately.
Yes. Not lately. And again, that, I mean, this is the first step, and that's why we don't have as detailed a site plan as we obviously would before the planning board. And also, like I say, the exact layout of the building will depend on the variance, hopefully, from this board that would allow the improvements to be closer to the house than it would be if we were required to go back to the drawing board and come up with some creative subdivision line that might require us to come back in another variance mode. We're hoping that won't be necessary. But yes, we are fully aware of the, the need for water and certainly would expect, you know, are not aware of any situation where that water couldn't be available with a new well if it were required.
Okay. I don't have anything more at the moment, Kevin.
Did you have more, any more comments on the special exception?
Yes, I think I've got a few more here that I haven't covered. And again, this is a public road that this property is on. We're really relying on the size of this facility to give assurance that the traffic that's resulting will not be excessive. This is a relatively, it's a dirt road, yes, but it's a good quality dirt road. I specifically asked whether it was prone in summer mud to be impassable, and I'm assured that it's not, that it's well-maintained by the town. It has the benefit of, you know, very few houses on it at this point between where the pavement stops in Goffstown is at Back Mountain Road. There's really only the Finney House at 42 and 42A. I believe, understand there's an apartment there as well. And then our client's property are the only houses in Goffstown on Joppa Hill Road. The next house is in Bedford, other than that sliver of land. So this does not have a lot of traffic from, you know, the uses right on this road right now. And we are proposing not to impact it in any great way by limiting the size of the facility.
The normal route for any trucks entering or leaving would be from New Boston Road up Joppa Hill?
Could be. I mean, there's lots of different ways of getting to this property. There's also Back Mountain Road to Shirley to 114, you know, going out in the other direction, you could pick up Rory Road.
And New Boston Road is Bedford.
Right. That's right.
So the question is, you know, is the predominant number of vehicles taking the larger road, which would be New Bedford, as in my opinion, which is New Bedford, Joppa Hill, are they then driving past those six or seven residential houses that are on the Bedford-Goffstown line? Is there impact to them? And more specifically to the question is, you're making statements that we don't, shouldn't be a number of vehicles that are impacting the, that, have you done the math on 12 animals, processing, bringing them, removing the meats, the waste materials, the liquids, that, you know, all of the math of all the vehicles coming and going daily on what that number, that vehicle count is?
Again, what our client has estimated is somewhere between 10 to 12 animals a day. Again, that mix would depend on whether there was a big, you know, animal in that. He intends to specialize not just in beef, but also goats and sheep and poultry. So again, that number count on animals could go up if they were smaller, animals go down if it were a larger animal. He's initially proposing to do a lot of that, going out and getting animals himself. At some point, some people may want to deliver them themselves, depending on where they're coming from. So again, it could vary. He's talking about a daily trip to dispose of waste from the holding tank, either doing it himself or having a company come in. You know, there will be other pickups of animal products that might be recycled by others that, you know, are not eaten. So yes, that there, you know, could be in any day's time, maybe five to 10 trips a day. We're talking about Monday through Friday. In, I see in your site plan regulations, you know, a low-volume road assumes 150 daily trips. So, you know, on this stretch of Goffstown Road that is the dirt road, there are really only two active properties. So I think the user, or the immediate butters to this road certainly are only contributing low volume to that road.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yeah?
I mean, in, in terms of what you were saying, this was one of the questions that I had earlier on how many animals per day, per week, we would be talking about. So larger animals, and I don't believe the last time we heard, we didn't get the merits on Mr. Attar's last visit here. We're talking about beef now as cattle as one of the animals, as well as the smaller ones, goats and sheep that would be part of the mix for slaughter as well. So we would probably be talking then about the kind of vehicles that would be entering. You wouldn't be talking about a pickup truck full of chickens. You'd be talking about at minimum probably a good, a pickup and a good-sized stock trailer. I'm just, you know, trying to get an idea of the kind of vehicles, vehicle traffic that you're talking about. That's one of the things that I think we need to examine on this is the vehicle load here, because you're not talking small vehicles. You're probably talking something essentially like a septic tank truck or whatever that's going to have to empty that holding tank. I don't know if you have a rendering company that's going to come in and collect the pelts, the inedibles, and, you know, the stomach contents, the paunch, the stuff that's too big to go down the drain, but you've got to get rid of any. And so you're talking about probably a lot of this traffic is going to be substantially sized vehicles going in and out of the property, I would imagine, based on that. Again, said Mr. Applicator is considering doing some of this.
That's right. That's right. And again, in terms of, yes, he could have some big animals in beef, but at the same time, the facility's only 1,500 square feet. So when he's working on beef cattle, that is self-limiting right there. And he does not want to have to keep animals in his barn and have to worry about feeding them for any prolonged period. So he is going after more that niche market of the, you know, the small producer who has animals that need the services rather than, you know, the big producer who's, you know, going to be shipping potentially a lot of large livestock all at once. I mean, that's not going to be a fit to this facility. If you've got, you know, a tractor-trac... If you've got, you know, a tractor-trailer load of beef cattle, they're not going to be able to be pre-processed by this facility.
Clarify this for me, though, if you would. Are we talking here regular commercial slaughter where Mr. Abdalcater is going to be purchasing the animals, processing them, and reselling them to stores, to people who either further cut it or, you know, selling it? Are we talking what's called custom slaughter where the, I'm a farmer, I have an animal, I've known people who've had lambs, you want a lamb butchered, you bring it down to Le May's, they do the butchering for you and give you the meat back.
Right.
But according to federal law, that meat can't be resold, however.
Exactly. And that's why he does not want to limit himself to custom slaughter. And that's why he does want to get USDA approval and to be able to sell that meat. But again, so you're absolutely right. It will not be just people coming in to bring their animals and take their animal back. It will be providing this service that will allow the resale of that meat. But it's really the size of the facility that will be self-limiting to how much traffic can really come to this site, because, you know, it just cannot serve a large number of animals at once.
And will this involve custom butchering down to the point of steaks chops? Or are we talking about just selling quarters and halves of animals for people to further cut at their own store?
Mr. Abdalcater, can I actually have you come forward to be at the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The purpose of this proposed project is, number one, to eliminate people coming from outside. That's the main reason, because we're not interested in dealing individually. We, what we are interested in is that we bring the animals, take care, we do the processing, and deliver the meat to proper places, which is licensed, that's the purpose that we have.
And they would sell it, like, as if you go to a store and it's a finished product?
Yes, sir.
Maybe individual portions or whatever? Are you talking about large pieces of, that would still need further processing after it was-
That will, yes, sir.
Both?
No, we will, depends, we are more interested on wholesale business. So what we do is just cut the animal, maybe cut them in half if they're large, or if they're small, like-
Like a half, a side of the animal, or a quarter?
If they're, like, yes, yes, sir. If it's a cow, for example, you have two slices in half, but if it's a goat or lamb, it's just full size, and then we send them to stores, the local stores in Manchester. That's what we're going, we're not interested in-
And they would, from there, if I want a steak, a particular cut, they would cut the meat further from the large piece that you sell to them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, clarify, is that a question?
And it's my understanding that's where the need is, too, that there are people that can do that next step of the fine butchering to sell to the retail or the restaurant. What there isn't is a local ability to sell beyond the custom, other than, it's my understanding that Le May and Sons in Goffstown already is the only one in the state that is USDA at this point to be able to sell the meat, other than back to the custom job.
Okay.
And again, we're looking for the variance to be able to maximize the buffers from the use among, on all three sides of the property. Again, we've got a good buffer already from Joppa Hill Road, but are looking to have that supplemented visually for when the leaves are off the trees by evergreens. Again, one of the conditions that we're proposing is giving assurance that there's no plan to have a large number of animals outdoors. In fact, the intent is to try to use the barn that's existing for keeping the animals even during the day indoors. But I tried to focus on the concern that animals left out at night can become noisy and objectionable to neighbors, and that's why we just tried to give the additional assurance that there is no, you know, plan to have a large number of animals outside potentially creating noise. And we also have a gentleman here that can speak a little bit more about the tradition of processing used for hamal meats. And I also have a email that the state veterinarian gave our client, basically citing a webpage and practices, to really confirm that part of the noise issue in dealing with the animals is the proper processing, and really their humane treatment actually makes them quieter. And that that is the goal of our client, to basically operate the facility in a way that helps keep the animals quiet. Because in agricultural use with livestock, part of the noise is just the animals themselves. And obviously, there, you know, we can't assure you that there'll be 100% quiet animals, but studies have been done that really show that how the animals are treated in this processing does make a difference. And that it is, if you're too noisy, that you need to look at your processing, because the animals well-treated and humanely-treated in this process tend to be quieter.
Can you, can you clarify for me, paragraph G, where you just talked about that you'd have no more than 12 large or medium-sized on-processes, will be allowed to remain overnight on the property without being indoors in a shed or barn? How I read that is that they are not required to be inside of a shed or a barn.
And that is, that's right, that there would be no more than 12 outside. And in fact, our clients into, and I guess what I had in mind was that there would be some points in, in summer months, as I remember my farm days, that there were warm conditions where you actually left the animals out sometimes at night.
So this conflicts with what you're stating, so I'm trying to clarify.
That's right. So I was trying to provide for that possibility, that on occasion, there might be some animals outside, but that the normal practice that they would be following would, is to rely primarily on the barn to keep them inside.
Is it identified where the outside would be on the map?
Again, what was initially planned-
There was a pen.
That's right.
There was initially planned to use a pen on this side, assuming the expansion of the garage this way to serve the facility. If we can bring that facility over this way, I would assume any pen could then be moved more centrally into the lot as well. Is that correct? My gosh.
Okay. Correct.
standards from a Temple Grandin website, which I also visited, which is easy to find, that she's actually come up with a scoring system for keeping cattle quiet, and is telling you that basically if your animals are noisy, you need to look at your best practices. And that's where, again, consistent with what Goffstown wants, as represented in its zoning ordinance, is exactly what our client wants to do as well.
There's two pages to this.
Yeah, there's two pages to it. I'm sorry, I didn't get that stapled. So I think I've covered how we really want to protect the site, both visually from smells, from odors, and from any wastes disturbing the site or abutting properties. And again, before going into general testimony, we do have a local farmer here who could speak to the need for such a facility firsthand. We also have someone who can speak as an expert in the hamal production of meat and-
I think that's halal.
Halal. Thank you.
What I'm going to ask at this point is, in the experience of this case and your client, and also we have another application for this evening, is that for the questions from the board, is that we're going to try to focus on the criteria specified by the variance, the five criteria, and the criteria specified by the special exception. I'm going to ask for any person that you bring forward, just maybe describe what aspect of the criteria they're speaking to. I understand the, we understand the needs for some things like this, the desires for things like this, but we as a board have to answer the questions as the unicorns of the variance criteria. It doesn't become a popularity contest. So we try to, that's how we have to answer it. So if you can describe, and you want to bring people that are speaking on behalf of this applicant for this application, that you help us out by telling us which criteria that they're speaking to.
Okay. The first person I'd like to ask to speak is Ms. Boddy, and ask her to keep her remarks really to the reasonable use of the small facility and how, you know, farmers would be looking to this facility to process their meat for sale. Again, focusing on the, not just the need, but also on, I lost my train of thought there. Part of it is the reasonable use and why this size of a facility should not have an impact beyond this property, other than, you know, a normal farm use.
Okay. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to help you out, but we're going to take a five-minute break before we step into that. And I think the board would probably agree with me. We probably want to try to limit our evening's activity to approximately 10:30 unless at that time we want to change our plan, but, you know, this is a lot of information. We don't have the wherewithal to be able to handle that information to go beyond three and a half hours of it. So, and I hope you understand that.
Certainly do.
It's a lot of information. So, like, we still hope we have to get, we can get to the second application, and we have two applications. So that's our desire. But with that, we'll take a five-minute break right now.
Great. Great.
All right, we're back. Thank you for letting us take in that five-minute break. Attorney Connell, I think we're over to you on determining who you were going to have and speak.
That's okay. We can go with Yousuf Abdul Kadir first.
Abdul Kadir, all right.
And I would ask him to identify himself and his background in addition to speaking about the meat processing of the Muslim tradition and its quietness factor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And can you repeat your name and how you're related to the applicant, or where you live?
My name is Yousuf Abdal Kadir, Y-U-S-U-F. No relationship with the applicant except shared last name. I live in Worcester, Massachusetts. A little bit about me. By trade, I am a software engineer, but for the last 15 years, I have been directly doing the halal meat business. In the last three years, I had a store in Worcester, Massachusetts. I was directly related in the dealing with the reselling of halal meat. I also personally have done halal meat processing the last 15 years, all over New England, in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, as well as here in New Hampshire.
Okay.
And tonight, I'll be talking to you briefly. I'm sure many of you are aware of what is halal meat. I'll talk to you briefly about what halal meat is and what does it entails from the Muslim faith. Halal is a term that is used in the Muslim faith. It means something, an object, or an action that is permissible in the faith. It's something permissible to do. Also, it is a term that is used for the meat that we consume. We can only, we are only allowed to consume what is called halal meat. The process about which we go about, we make the meat halal, is called zabiha. Zabiha is the process that you make about the meat halal. And that's the only meat that we are allowed to consume. The zabiha, or halal meat, it is somewhat similar. There is a lot of similarity between what is halal meat and what is kosher. There are few differences, but in most part, there are a lot of similarities. Basically, the process about going about making the meat halal is how the animal is processed. The way the animal needs to be processed is basically there got to be a person who is knowledgeable about on how to do the proper process, basically the slaughtering of the animal, the equipment that has been used, and the procedures that needs to be used. One of the thing, the key criteria that needs to be, that we look at is the humane treatment of the animal, that we're not necessarily going out because it is an animal and treating it in a way that we shouldn't treat like a human being. There are animals, they need to be treated humanly, and they need to be processed in the best practice way. There are numerous studies that have been looked into the process, how the zabiha meat, how the halal meat is processed. And there are numerous studies that they have looked at it and how it is, it deals, how humanly it deals with the animals. What was surprising, at least for me, from my personal experience, all of the studies, I'm going to mention some of them for you, all of the studies that came about, they mentioned it, something which is unique. I didn't see any objection to the process, whereas where they found out a problem was in the process itself or the person who was doing it, they were not properly following the guidelines. Because of that one, there were numerous of inhumane activities, but not the process itself, but either from a lack of knowledge or from a lack of following the proper procedures. There is, for example, a detailed study that been done by Dr. Temple Grandin. She is a leading designer of livestock handling facilities and a professor of animal sinus at Colorado State University. She did look into the halal-zabiha process, and what she concluded is the animal is slaughtered without being stunned with a razor-sharp knife. When the cut is done correctly, the animal appears not to feel it. From an animal welfare standpoint, the major concern during ritual slaughter are the stressful and cruel methods of restraint or holding that are being used in some plants, which is basically what her studies found out is the halal way, the zabiha way of dealing with the animals. When it is not properly followed, that may subject to some unnecessary handling of the animals. And she have done a detailed study about the vocalization of cattle. And she had, as the counsel pointed out, she scored, there is a method of scores that she have used. And what she found out was, in her studies, over 95% of the studies that she had, on the observations she have done, she found out that the halal method was scored over 95% of the time. And the only time that it fell short, what she found out was people not following proper procedures, such as either not using a sharp knife or applying pressure on the animals, or the way they are restraining the animals, or in some cases, hanging the animals upside down before slaughtering them. There is a study also, in 1978, a study was done incorporating EEG with electrodes surgically implanted on skulls of 17 sheeps and 15 calves. And this study was done at the University of Veterinary Medicine in Germany by William Schuls. And what the study concluded was, the slaughter in the form of ritual cut, if carried out properly, is painless in sheep and calves according to EEG recordings and missing defensive actions. For sheep, there were in part severe reactions, both in bloodletting cut and in the pain stimuli when captive bolt stunning was used. This study is cited by the German Constitutional Court, and it is permitting of zabiha slaughtering. There are also numerous of other studies that have been done in the UK, in France, and other places. Finally, there is a study that been done by the Food and Agriculture Organization of the United Nations and the Humane Society International. And what they have found out is, in their conclusion, they said the animals that are slaughtered according to kosher and halal should be securely restrained, particularly the head and neck, before cutting the throat. As movements during the slaughter results in a poor cut, bad bleeding, slow loss, slow loss of consciousness, if at all, and pain. So basically, what all the studies found out was the lack of proper following the halal procedure might cause unnecessary pain, but not the process itself. If the process is, if the halal way of slaughtering an animal is properly followed, it is less painful and there is, the animals are much quieter, there is less noise, and there is less vocalization during the process. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Actually, a couple. Basically, to clarify, the difference, and I, again, from what I have read on it, with halal versus, say, commercial slaughtering, the animal is not stunned, you know, again, a slaughter, a commercial slaughterhouse, so he was that captive bolt gunner, something that stuns the animal. This is just, the animal is calmed, and then it's one swift cut.
That's correct.
And this might be perhaps, in a slaughterhouse, say, the size of what Mr. Advocater is proposing. How would, I've watched some videos where the animal is handled manually, placed on its side, calmed, offered water, and then done a, basically, a very, I guess, old-fashioned, very manual slaughter. Would that be the procedure in a facility of the type that Mr. Advocater is talking about? Or would we be talking about some sort of shoot, a mechanical restraint that would hold the animal during the slaughter process? Is that allowable under the laws governing halal?
Yes. In fact, I have, personally have done in numerous slaughterhouses, including here in Massachusetts at LeMay. And basically, the guideline is, as long as the animal is treated humanely and there is no subjection of unnecessary pain and suffering, then you can use a shoot, you can use whatever method is easier. Personally, there are, unless the animal is large enough, like a cow or what have you. For smaller animals, I feel more comfortable doing it other ways. But as long as the animal is not subjected to unnecessary pain and suffering, then that's one way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you speaking for the applicant in that you know that the, Mr. Abdal Kadir will be following proper protocol and will be doing it properly? Are you comfortable that that would be, in this case, it would be properly done?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless, I can tell you from my experience, like I told you, I've been in a business. The people of the Muslim faith, because of the guidelines, they are very, very, very sensitive. And I have heard a lot of concerns from people. I can assure you, unless he follows the guidelines, he will have a tough business of doing it. So he have no choice but to follow it.
Okay.
Which leads me to another question. Is there a body or an organization that certifies the meat as halal, an Islamic council, or anything of that nature that provides some? I mean, again, you compared it to kosher. Is there anything that's analogous to, like, a kosher stamp or something that certifies it was followed?
Unfortunately, here in New England, we don't have any body. But in the US, there are numerous bodies. For example, there is a body in Washington DC. There is another one in New Jersey. There is another one in Minnesota, I guess. In most cases, what they do is they go into the bigger facilities where they have a large volume of, where the people are, you don't know who is doing it. Whereas in the cases of either a custom slaughterhouse or a slaughterhouse, which is where we have in New England, since we don't have any body, basically, people who are certified by their local mosques, which is the local organization, they would be basically to give the authority to say that this is halal, this follows halal process or not. Including myself, I had the privilege of people raising an objection and visiting a facility, whether they are properly following the process or not.
So if there is a mosque who decides to per, who, you go into that area, you sell food in the markets in which they deal, someone from that congregation might come visit Mr. Advocater's facility and say, you know, this is all right, it's not an official certification, but somebody comes and checks it out.
That's right.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Connell?
Do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. My name is Brenda Bati. I'm a regional farmer.
Just start your last name, please.
B as in boy, H-A-T-T-I. Just to give you a little bit of my background and relationship to this project and my interest. I am a farmer. I also run the Jaffrey Farmers Market, I manage that. I also run the Local 4-H Club. My previous work was as an environmental, consulting environmental scientist, working on large land use projects, small to large. And also, I worked as the program manager for a regional land use, I'm sorry, land protection and conservation organization. And I was in charge of 23 towns. So my interest here is in regional impacts. And I know that Attorney Connell asked me to address need and reasonable use, so I will do so in order. As far as regional use, I'm sorry, as far as reasonable use goes, one of the major current obstacles to farmers is finding proper facilities to have their meat processed. Right now, I don't know if you've heard about the term CAFO, concentrated animal farming oper, or feeding operation. These are the things a lot of people have in mind as the huge facilities where all the animals go, and then you're slaughtering, you know, hundreds and thousands of animals. And then the push nowadays for local meat, for locally raised animals, seems to be an ongoing and a trend that's not going to go away. And so in order to accommodate that, we need the facilities and the structure in place that will allow farmers to not only go and get their hay cut or sharpen, but also somebody to raise that hay. All the way to the guy who processes the meat needs to be kind of local. Here, we have an opportunity in a town that's just next to a very populous location, Manchester and the surrounding areas, where we do have a large ethnic and religious group we can service. This seems to be a nearly ideal location, in so much as it's agriculturally zoned. It's kind of buffered from a lot of residential, very, very nearby residential areas. My own experience with slaughtering is, we do raise animals. I have a farm where we raise animals. Some of my cohorts in town raise lambs, sheep, cattle, and so forth. And the, again, the limitation is finding proper outlets for getting the animals processed. I myself travel one hour and 20 minutes to get my animals processed. That means I have to raise a big enough number. And the particular facility handles small animals only, to make it economically feasible. Here, we have an opportunity to service not just the ethnic community. My understanding of this project is, even though the primary intent is to service those with the halal requirement, we can still, the applicant is still able with the halal requirement, we can still buy, the applicant is still able to buy the meat from local farmers, as long as it's slaughtered in a halal manner. So they can buy the meat from local farmers, thereby supporting that economic structure, supporting the local farmers, and adding to that. So we have as a regional impact, the economic benefit. Right now, let me just, let me just make sure I got my thoughts here.
Could you speak, Brenda, specifically to the impact of this size of a facility at 1,500 square feet on basically a four-acre lot?
So that's, that's the need here, I'm sorry, that's the reasonable use.
Right.
So here we have a fairly small project, as, from my perspective on having done many, many hundreds of projects, this is a fairly small project. However, a 4.2-acre lot with a 15-square-foot facility accommodating the very small number of animals that are being projected here seems to be very reasonable from other projects, compared to other projects that I've been involved with. You can accommodate, what I'm told are the numbers of animals, very easily with that amount of footage. The other thing is, the suggested impacts here are very negligible. Odors, traffic, et cetera, from the perspective of a facility like this, can all be mitigated fairly easily. I understand that Mr. Advocater has offered to mitigate many of those, and for those, there's all kinds of new and improved technology that can address some of the issues that are of concern to some of the local and neighboring folks. So I think they've addressed some of those already. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
So you, in your opinion, that the processing of, I mean, possibly up to 12 large or medium-sized animals a day, is that possible in a 1,500-square-foot facility?
Yes, it is.
Is that considered a lot, or a very small amount? Or how do you consider 12 animals in a facility of this size done by two people?
I'm not an expert in the slaughtering business, and I believe the previous expert witness could have addressed that better. However, I have seen it done very professionally, very clean facility and so forth, accommodating those numbers of animals. So I believe it could be done, but I'm not an expert.
Okay, thank you for your honesty on that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, just a moment.
No, I'm sorry, this would be for Ms. Connell.
Okay, speak.
Advocater. One of the things that was mentioned, I believe, in being around for the previous hearings is how many employees or how many people working are we actually talking about? I believe one of Mr. Advocater's sons indicated in the earlier hearings that he might be working there. And since I understand that the actual slaughter may only be done by a male person of the faith, Mr. Advocater would be the only employee, and his wife would be working in the packaging and dealing with the products afterward. I guess, it goes to that question of can you process 12 or 15 animals a day if you have only one person who can do the slaughter?
Yeah. The plan is to have another probably full-time employee, as well as another part-time, probably. So there'd be basically four people.
So there would be, there would be two people who would be able to slaughter. Thank you.
All right. Attorney Connell, anyone else?
At this point, no.
You're okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll open up. Is anyone here else besides the people that you've had, attorney, that are speaking for the applicant? Any abutters that are speaking against the application? First, I'm going to ask for abutters. I don't know, are you in a butter, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to have you come up, because I know you traveled three hours, so, for this. Please come forward, have a seat, state your name, and...
My name is Martha Finney, and I grew up on the property immediately north of the proposed facility. And as was previously stated, the land was put under conservation easement by my late mother, stepmother, actually. And she set aside the building lot, which is in the field, quite close to the proposed facility. Not for an idle reason, it's because my sister and I inherited the land, and we each have different needs. One of us needs to sell for financial reasons. Neither of us can buy the other out. And the idea was that we would each have a property that we could either build a house for ourselves on, and the other could have the other house, or to sell that land. I think it's reasonable to assume that we would be unable to sell that side if there is a slaughterhouse next door. It's perhaps true, although I'm not sure I agree, that people who have already bought property and then a slaughterhouse is permitted to go in, have to take their, you know, lumps. But clearly, I think it's reasonable to assume that we will lose most of the value of that side of the property. Because, and I actually, three years ago, or whenever the proposal came up before, I talked to the Society for Preservation of New Hampshire Forests and asked if there was any likelihood that the building site could be recited. And they said, no. You know, that they'd never do that. You know, it's, you know, very unheard of to put the building site on another part of the land that's already under easement. So that's, that's my primary concern, that diminution of value will substantially hurt me or my sister, or, since we're in this together, both of us. The other concern I have is addressing compliance. If there are no state regulators now, and Washington seems a long way off, and it's currently in some disarray, if compliance doesn't happen, if more head of animals are slaughtered, if there is pollution in the surrounding wetlands, which are abundant, how, how can any neighbor find any satisfaction if there's no one to appeal to? It would fall on the town, I suppose, and the zoning board, or whatever, the town government, to enforce the standards, and, you know, how could, how could that be taken on? I don't know. So, you know, that's one concern, you know, another concern that I have. And I don't want to take up any more time. I think that, you know, is there, is there a maximum number of animals? I had heard in the previous application that there were going to be substantially more head of animals processed, or that was the hope. Is there any limit? Is, I mean, it's proposed for 10 or 12, but what if, in actuality, 25 or 40? How would a neighbor, you know, who would you go to? You know, who would you complain to?
In this case, the applicant has proposed, it would be part of, I imagine it would be part of our finding and part of our ruling that it would be limited to 12 animals. And I think that would be the only thing, that would be, the only place that would be identified was in that.
Yeah. And also, the last thing I'll say is, in terms of the road, in the winter, there are many people that go off the road. Huge trucks would have a very difficult time navigating. The power does go out, you know, for periods of time, and, you know, it's well-maintained for a dirt road, but in the winter, it's another matter altogether. So, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Before you go, is there any questions? Can you tell me about the building site? I know Attorney Connell spoke to it some, but I wasn't entirely clear on how large the building site is on your piece of property.
Well...
The distance to the property line?
A two-acre site located at least 400 feet easterly of Joppahill Road, and no more than 750 feet easterly of Joppahill Road. So it's kind of, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room. And no less than 150 feet northerly of the southern property line. So...
That last part again, no less than?
No less than 150 feet northerly of the southern property line, which is a stone wall running between our two properties, and no more than 400 feet north of said property line. So it's kind of close, you know?
150 feet.
Yeah, it's kind of close. So, anyway, that's, that's my testimony.
Is that lot by chance depicted on this, on this map? I don't know if you've got one, if you could pick it out?
I think the whole lot is. Are you talking about the building site?
I'm just interested in where the location of this lot is. You're looking at down the bottom, right by your pinky fingers, on your left hand is right about where the property is.
Green is...
That's the conservation.
This is property right there, and then this is probably, are you directly north of him?
Yeah, well, it's hard for me, I mean, yeah.
This is Joppahill Road, right there.
Okay, oh, this is Joppahill Road, okay. So, is green Bedford?
Green is conservation.
The bottom of the line here, so that brings on...
Ah, okay.
May I use yours?
Okay.
I think it's on here.
It may be on that one.
No.
No.
You had, Attorney Connell, you had a diagram, right?
I think it's...
This is his lot right here.
Basically, what she's reading from...
I think it's helping. I think this...
Basically, what she read from is the conservation easement deed that reserved this right to create a building lot, which is, I believe, had to be 150 feet north of this southerly property line, not more than 400, if I got it remember correctly, at least 400 feet back. We've got 322 here, 130, that's 430, 430. So we've got about 430 of our client's property. So that lot could be in around here, and would have to go no further back than 750 feet, right?
In other words, if I may?
It's not really created at this point.
Something like that.
That's right, that's right.
Sitting about it.
And it has to, and it will still be subject to the conservation easement that is all around it, which, again, reduces the value of the property itself, because it will permit agricultural uses beyond that two acres. So it is a reserved building lot, but a reserved building lot within the conservation area that is restricted to the agricultural uses. And on that second page of the deed, did provide for animal products, so...
Actually, if I, I wouldn't have mentioned this, because I don't think it's pertinent, but I will say that Eileen was horrified at the thought, so please don't use her name in reference.
Ms. Finney, I'll have you address any questions or comments to me and not to the applicant.
All right. So just for the record, let's not go there, okay?
Just reading out the deed.
Okay, so which, basically, Ms. Finney, what you identified is that the property or the building lot is not that far from where the current...
Exactly.
...barn and the house is on the abutting property.
That's right.
Okay.
And that is one reason we would like the variance to help draw the use down, because we do think it's fair to be a butter to try to create as much a buffer there as possible.
If I may also, one question. Were we talking about with the garage building that's been referred over the course of the evening, we're talking about modifying building on the existing structure, or are we talking about raising and rebuilding?
Just before that, we have Ms. Finney at the table still, so before, is it addressed to Ms. Finney or the attorney in this case?
No, well, I'll pass on a question for now, my apologies.
Okay, that's all right. We're trying, we're trying to keep control here. Ms. Finney, did we have any other questions for Ms. Finney?
No.
Did, is there any, so you addressed the three points, I think, you had, it was the, yes, it was the diminution of value, whether or not there would be any compliance checks, and then the road in winter is problematic. Those are the three main points that you addressed.
That's it.
Anything else?
Um...
Because you came a long way, I want to make sure we got to hear you, and we don't have to make you come back.
Well, just, just in terms of our, you know, probable expectations or hopes, we did talk to a realtor just last weekend, not anticipating this particularly, but trying to address my sister's wishes. And he did say that he thought selling the whole, that side, that 50-acre tract, which could be done with the building lot, I don't know if I should mention figures, but just, let's say it was worth a substantial amount. I mean, we're thinking of not just subdividing the building lot, you see, but selling that whole part, which would have almost no value without the building lot, because no house could be built on it, so...
If you were to, if you were to subdivide the building, buildable portion off to sell, is what you're saying, it would be of no value?
Well, that's probably true, but no, when I was...
Well, I'm trying to make sure, I understand what you're trying to say.
What I was saying was, one, one scenario was selling that whole side, it's a, I think it's a 50-acre tract, with a building lot on it, so that the buyer could then build a house, have a barn, have the woods, et cetera.
But then the remainder would not be buildable at all, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
But there would be availability to build a house, you know, septic system, you know, that, the whole, all the modern conveniences, which otherwise would not be available.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other abutters? Sir, please come forward.
My name is Paul Dunphy, and...
Can you spell your last name?
Sure, it's D-U-N-P, as in Peter, H-Y.
Okay.
Husband of the previous witness, Martha Finney, co-owner of the property that runs along both sides of Joppahill Road, and wanted to express my opposition to the application for a number of reasons. We've had extensive presentations, as you know, this evening about technique for slaughtering. We've talked about whether or not there's a need for additional slaughter facilities in this area. And we've also heard mentioned some concerns about religious observances, which don't, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, aren't really related to the issue at hand. What technique one might use to run a slaughterhouse isn't an issue really before the, before the zoning board. Whether there's a need or not is certainly a question that might fall to the Agriculture Commission, but not to the, not to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And in terms of exercising religious expression, there's nothing before the board that would in any way prohibit or minimize anyone's ability to consume properly-prepared meats. We're talking about a commercial slaughter facility immediately adjacent to property that we own on Joppahill Road. And for that reason, I think that we base our deep concerns. I think that the counsel for the applicant has really done a reasonable job of spelling out what the concerns for this facility are. She's repeatedly mentioned concerns about odor, noise, and traffic, and talked about an effort to try to minimize those, nevertheless recognizing that those are the realities of a commercial slaughter operation. Noise from animals, traffic, dealing with waste. I think, I think yourself spoke to the concern about how much traffic would be generated during the course of a week when you're slaughtering 50 to 60 animals. This is traffic that would be of a commercial nature, big vehicles to transport cattle, vehicles to pump out a waste-holding tank, vehicles to remove the remains of animals that would be slaughtered. So you have really substantial amounts of traffic. You're talking about 50 or 60 animals a week, you're talking about numerous trips, perhaps on a daily basis, over a narrow dirt road. And it's, I think that's one of the considerations that the Zoning Board of Adjustment needs to, needs to keep in mind. The other concern that we have as abutters, in addition to the noise and the odor and the traffic, that I think are just simply part of the nature of a commercial slaughter operation, is the uncertainty of the future development of a facility were the board to... board to, to issue its approval. The board needs to, as I'm sure you do routinely, look forward, and what we see in the areas surrounding this proposed slaughter facility is increasing suburban development. During the, during the past 20 years, we've seen numerous houses built in the Bedford area, but increasingly, what we're seeing i- is not really agricultural, an agricultural future for much of this area immediately surrounding the proposed slaughter facility, but an increasing suburban development, neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods that would be adversely affected by a commercial slaughter facility.
Do you see that with the presentation that the properties that you, I believe, have, and also across the road are conservancy, that those would be at risk of turning into residential agricultural neighborhoods?
I, I, I think the future of the land's fairly clear, that, that there are some preserved areas, but just beyond the proposed slaughter facility are a number of houses facing on Joppahill Road in the Bedford, across the Bedford line. Then immediate left, you have a, a street, Burke Dale, it's called, going down perpendicular to Joppahill Road, a thoroughly built-up neighborhood within a short distance of this proposed slaughter facility, and that's the future of that whole area of Bedford is residential development. It's true that our family, looking ahead, put conservation restrictions on the property that is in Goffstown, and in an effort to, to preserve some kind of natural state, to help with groundwater regeneration, to provide habitat for wildlife, and to really allow people in Goffstown to have that as a resource, and, and to have it as kind of a gem in that section of town undeveloped area. But it was certainly not ever contemplated that there'd be a commercial slaughter facility adjacent to it, and I, I would, would invite the board to, to really look closely at the criteria that is, you know, obligated to review when reaching a decision about the, as a, you know, whether there'd be unnecessary hardship to the owner. Well, I, I wouldn't say so because it's not, it, this is proposal, it's contemplated, it's not a restriction on something that they're already, that they're already doing. And, you know, whether there'll be a diminution of value surrounding properties, I really can't think of another proposal that would put the value of adjacent properties more at risk than a slaughter facility, and so I, I would, I would urge the board to, to take that into consideration as it deliberates on this proposal. You know, even an auto junkyard, I think, would, would in the public mind be less of a concern.
That's not what's before us. An auto junkyard is not before us.
Right, fortunately, yeah, fortunately.
Just to focus your questions a couple, uh, to, to the criteria that we have, special exception has five criteria.
That's right.
You spoke to a couple of things. So, do you believe that the use of this property for a slaughterhouse and a principal residence will create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that can't be ameliorated?
Yes.
Which means can't be reduced.
Sure, I understand, and I appreciate the chance to answer, and I would, you know, clearly say in the affirmative, I think that the town zoning officers and the people of Goffstown, in their wisdom, established that a slaughter facility would require a special exemption, because they recognized that the potential for undermining neighboring values, for creating odor, noise, and traffic are all inherent in the operation of that facility. That's why...
This application, this application, as to how they've proposed it, do you believe that it can't be ameliorated?
Yes, I, oh, oh, I, yeah, I, I, I think that's most unlikely. It's just simply in the inherent nature of the, of the enterprise of commercial slaughter operations.
So, the other aspect that you talked to was, uh, the criteria says the size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood.
Well, I think...
When you're speaking to the future, like, the future of this neighborhood.
Well, let's start with what we've heard.
How about as of now?
Let's, well, you mean, no slaughter facility?
No, I'm saying the neighborhood head, the neighborhood as it exists now.
Yes.
Does this application, the granting this application, alter the character of this neighborhood as it exists now?
I don't think it's any question that it would alter it in a negative way. When you, when you calculate the number of animals that is, are being proposed to slaughter on a weekly basis, perhaps 50 to 60 animals a week, and the traffic that that necessarily entails, but what we have now is a fairly rural environment.
So, how does it alter, is it, is it just the traffic? What else alters the character of the neighborhood?
Uh, odor, noise, and traffic are all potential dramatic changes in the, in the character of the...
And you, and as presented, you don't believe that they can be ameliorated?
Well, I don't think that you can reduce the size or frequency of the traffic that needs to come.
Smell, odor.
Sure, but let, let's deal with the traffic first, because that's, you know, one of the most obvious manifestations of a commercial slaughter facility up and down the street. I don't think, there's no way that you can transport animals in, transport a processed meat out without additional traffic, and you need substantial vehicles to bring the animals in, you need substantial vehicles to remove the, the liquid waste, and you need substantial vehicles to remove the processed but not saleable parts of the animal. So, traffic, you know, without question dramatically increased, not only the frequency, but the size of the vehicles that would be required to use that, that road. Odor, I think, is just inherent in a slaughter facility, and, and noise, yeah, I, the, the, you, you really have to accept, if you're going to have a commercial slaughter operation, that these are going to be present realities.
Is traffic as proposed, noise, and odors inappropriate for this neighborhood as zoned?
At the level to which a commercial slaughter operation would affect them, yes, of course.
And it's zoned agricultural?
It's zoned, um, so what you contemplate there is really a, a sort of a farming operation, but you don't contemplate the traffic that's required to maintain a commercial slaughter operation.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other obutters? Any else, anyone else that hasn't yet spoken that wants to speak to this application?
I would like to speak.
Okay, please come forward and state your name and for or against, and...
My name is Melanie Pelamino. I'm in, I'm an abutter. I'm a renter at the Finney House. I'm Martha's...
Which, what's the property address?
Forty-two Joppahill Road. I'm Martha Finney's, um, stepsister, I'm sister to her. Um, and I just wanted to bring up one point, I mean, it is about the agricultural use. The, um, Paul Dunphy touched a little bit about the change in the neighborhood, and even the res, the, the property of the applicant, while it's zoned agricultural, it was built in the seventies as a suburban home. It's a small lot, it's quite a small lot, it wasn't a huge, the farm itself was subdivided when the Fletchers bought it, and the, the farm part of it, the old farmhouse stayed in Bedford, and part of it became the subdivision that's the, that's the, the Burke Dale subdivision properties. It's quite a small lot, it's not like a, you know, when you talk about an agricultural property, you think about it, something that historically was used for agriculture. The only animal buildings for housing animals originally when that house was built were kennels, dog kennels, and then I think the Claps got a permit and put a barn on it in the nineties. But it's not like some grandpa's farm, you know, and when people bought those houses in Burke Dale, they didn't have this understanding that it was some kind of farm, that, you know what I'm sa, what I'm trying to say is that it, it's not like, it's a commercial activity more than it is a traditional farming activity. And, I mean, that's not much of a point to make, I know people have talked so well tonight, but, um, and I guess also I wonder just about that idea of a wedge. I mean, I've sat with these planning things, and people, once some permit is granted, say this business fails, it, it may not, once it's given over to this use, the size can be increased, the scope of it can be increased. If this, if the, if the Hillel fails, and another kind of more, you know, classical type of slaughterhouse was to go in, there's nothing to stop it, right? And I just definitely think it cha, would change the look and the feel of the neighborhood, most certainly. It, it couldn't not. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Mr. Chair and the board, thank you for listening to me. My name is Danielle Mazzella, M-A-Z-Z-E-L-L-A. I reside at 487 Joppahill Road, so I am the house that is next to the property that has the easement that goes back to the property. So, between his house and my house, there's a small easement, so there's really just a field between us.
Are you south of the property, north of the property?
I am south of the property. So, I own into Bedford, my house is placed on Bedford, but we pay into Goffstown taxes as well.
So, you're one of the houses in this, this property along the south?
On that strip, yep.
Okay.
Um, towards the corner of Burke Dale.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of points. Um, the first is, in 2008, I brought forth a petition with over 250 signatures on it, stating that the residents of Bedford, surrounding area will definitely, definitely believe that this will impact their property. I have that again, if you'd like me to submit it. Um, but...
That's up to you, if you wish to just submit it.
Oh.
I'm going to leave that up to you, I'm not going to ask.
Okay, I'll go ahead and submit it then.
Okay.
Um...
Not that there's anything wrong with that, is, is it the same petition?
It's the same petition.
Yeah.
So, I, I didn't know if you wanted it or, this way you'll have it.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to address the fact, um, that he, in his application, Mr. Abdul Dakar, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong, specified that this was for religious needs and to meet the religious needs. It is my belief that this is a commercial business that he's putting forth. Even in last month's meeting, he made a statement to the board when the board decided to push it back a month, that he needed to make a living and he has bills to pay, which just goes to show me that supports the fact that he's doing this for commercial purposes and not for religious purposes.
Does that, do you, in your mind, does that change the application, that it's not valid, or is it just a different, or another rationale for it?
I think it's just another rationale for the fact that this isn't really, what he's asking for, in my opinion, and I'll talk to the criteria of meaning of variance, but I believe that, you know, he's saying, oh, well, I just want to keep in, or the attorney was saying, I just want to keep in the spirit of the neighborhood, and the spirit of the neighborhood is not a commercial business neighborhood. It is agriculture, we do have animals living around us, but that's a very different beast than slaughtering them and having a commercial business there.
Good.
I also would like to point out that the way that the attorney spoke, at least in my opinion, led to believe that this is a very secluded area. From my house, I can see, if I'm sitting in my backyard at my pool, I can see his back deck, I can hear his children playing. So, the argument that there's, you know, not a lot of people around him, I have neighbors, we can all hear the same things, there's certainly on the north side of him, I wouldn't say there's a whole lot of development going on, but directly south of him, and we actually, the way our elevation is, he's probably about 40 feet higher than us. So, everything just slopes down to us, rainwater, sound, you have it. With that, I'd like to also add that the traffic, which they've spoken about, I won't go into much detail about it, but I definitely do believe it would create a hazard to neighbors and pedestrians, which goes against the criteria for the variance. You had mentioned earlier that New Boston Road is a much larger road. In order for any of these trucks to come up, if, assuming that they will go for a larger road, because they're not going to want to go all the way back Shirley Hill and come through the back way, they're going to be coming right past my house. The attorney made mention that the roads are in fairly good condition, and I will say that they do often come by and re-dirt the roads. However, it's not just the winter, I mean, they start, once we start getting snow or any kind of sleet, you can't pass two people, you have to, once there's any sort of buildup, you have to wait, let the other people go, and then, then you can drive. And I've had to do that several times for my own home, just to get into my own property. That continues all the way through because once the winter's over, then we have all the melting. So, it's complete slush, where cars are getting stuck, cars are getting stuck on the side of the road, so to say that it's, the traffic won't impact it, I don't see how those, how that road is going to be able to handle all of the commercial things that are coming in and out. On top of the five days a week where he's delivering the animals, we're talking about the disposal of the waste, we're talking about him saying, well, I may actually store the manure, so now we're going to have a manure company that's coming in to pick up the manure. We're going to have now, originally it started, or what I originally heard was that it was going to be him and his wife working there, now we're talking about two additional employees, so there's going to be more traffic of employees coming through.
On the traffic question, in the summertime, I, I assume you're speaking, the Joppahill Road is, gets slushy and you have to wait for it.
Yeah, the dirt road.
The dirt road. Is it sufficient in the summertime that it's wide enough for people to pass? Is just that in the wintertime, it's not as...
It's wide enough for two smaller cars to pass.
Okay.
So, I mean, it would depend on if you both had pickups, no, you would not be able to pass.
Do you, are you aware of any commercial vehicles on that road today?
Um, the Goffstown garbage truck comes back and forth, along with the Bedford, there's a Buckley Trash that services some of Bedford.
As far as, you know, of any of your neighbors that have businesses that require commercial vehicles?
No.
To come through there?
No.
So, this would be the first that, that you would know of in the area?
That I know of, yes. Excuse me for one moment.
Just so I can address a question while you're gathering your thoughts, what you're saying then is, you get into the winter, if you've got snow storage pushed to both sides of the road, you're basically down to a one-lane road with turnouts?
You're absolutely down to a one-lane road. There's, I mean, there's no question asked.
And so to get anything larger than a, a car or an average-sized pickup?
That's, yeah.
Is going to be impassable for people in the other direction?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and what Joppahill does as well, from the dirt, when they come and smooth it out, it's fine, but then as, you know, the month goes on, you get these huge potholes, well, that all goes to the side, and then when the water starts running, because he's on such a higher elevation, everything comes out and down, so that we get these big rivets on each side of them, so that it's like streams that are cutting through the dirt, which makes your road even smaller, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a point that the attorney had first mentioned that he was looking into a tank for this waste to be trucked out, but then at a different point, she said, well, he may do it himself. And so my concern is, which one is it? I mean, he's coming before the board and, and we're hearing that he's done all this research and he's looking to maybe have a tank done, but then on the side note, it's, well, but he may do it himself. Well, if he's doing it himself, we're talking about a pretty large tank, we're talking about how do we know that it's done right? How do we know that there's no leakage coming out? If he's unloading it himself, who knows what's getting into the ground, which is then in turn getting into our well water. I believe that will cause a nuisance to the public in terms of the waste, in terms of what's seeping into the ground, and we have no idea how big of a nuisance that could be. That could be an extremely significant nuisance. We have nothing that's going to regulate that. Although, um, I believe that he has good intentions in mind, I would also like to send around, and I apologize for only having one copy, but these are, these are pictures of bone... and I apologize for only having one copy, but these are, these are pictures of bones that have been slaughtered, that have been brought onto my property by dogs. So I don't know where they're coming from. I would imagine that the dogs are bringing them back. You can see there's maggots on them. There's significant flies on my property. So it leaves me to believe that if I'm experiencing that, when there's not even anything supposedly there, my concern is how well will he keep up with, continuing.
Are you stating that you believe they're coming from that?
I absolutely believe they're coming from his property.
And they're not, they're not wild animals?
If you look at the pictures, you can see that they're actually sawed-off pieces. They had fresh meat on them. So I don't, the dogs, my dog and my neighbor's dogs, don't go that far. I know that the finnies aren't doing it. I don't know where else they could be coming from, but what I do know is that there's a gentleman next to me, who lives next to me, that is proposing to have a slaughterhouse, who is saying he needs to do it for his own purposes, and I'm getting bones that are seared with maggots in them on my property. Lastly, I'd like to speak to the fact that the variance requires that, the criteria says it cannot negatively affect the surrounding properties or diminish the value. With that, I'd like to say that I have a letter that I'd also like to submit to you from, from sellers who had received an offer on their home, and once the slaughterhouse was brought to the buyer's attention, they withdrew their offer.
Can I ask you that before I say, is that a recent one? You discussed that in 2008, or the last time it came from?
This is August 2008.
From 2008. We didn't discuss that, because that came into effect after the hearing happened here, and then I think you moved on to Superior Court at that point. So, but I got that in terms of, so that I had it if it ever came back into play. Just last month, I received a phone call from another Realtor, Kathy Fair Alexander, who does a lot of work in the area, because she had a buyer who was interested down the road from us, and she wanted to know what was the status, because her buyer was not willing to entertain putting in any offer on a house if this was still going on. So clearly, there's a continued message that it is going to diminish our properties. And, you know, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm a homeowner that takes care of my gardens, I like to make the neighborhood look better, my kids ride their bikes on the street and they ride down to the neighbors, which there are many neighbors on Burke Dale. It's not a secluded area, and I don't see how this will help any resident, whether they be in the, on the Goffstown line or the Bedford line.
Any questions, Ms. Mazella? I have a question on the first point, second point you made regarding the sounds, that you and your neighbors could hear sounds, their children playing from the Mr. Albitz property. It's one thing to hear it, do you consider then if you were to hear animals, if there were animals, or-
We've heard animals.
Is that considered nuisance in your mind? Is that a nuisance? Hearing it may be one thing, is it a nuisance?
First of all, I don't mind hearing his children. I love the sound of laughter, you know, I don't mind that, they play their music, I can hear that, that doesn't bother me. What does bother me, and what I do consider a nuisance, is when we're hearing, there's, I don't know how to explain it, other than some sort of electrical screeching that we hear. And my daughters say to me, are they killing the animals now? That's a nuisance to me. That goes beyond her nightmares that she has, and even tonight, don't let them, don't let them put the slaughterhouse next to our house. She's scared of it. I mean, she's completely scared of it. And so it's not only a nuisance for me, because I hear this stuff going on, but it's a concern that my family is dealing with.
So you believe that any noises, if there were noises for animal processing facility would be a nuisance?
Absolutely.
If I may, what would you estimate the distance from, you're the first house on the corner of Burke Dale?
No, I'm actually the second house closer to his property.
And if I remember the map, you're set a bit further back toward the back of your lot than some of the other houses.
Um, no.
Or you're probably the closest to Mr. Albitz's property?
I am the closest neighbor to Mr. Albitz.
What'd you guess, a football field, a couple of football fields from your house to his?
One football field.
There you go, that's my husband.
So three, 400 feet, or?
Yeah, I think actually, I think according to her figures, she said it was about 400 feet.
Okay.
In between.
Any other questions?
You should be able to point her house out on that photograph?
Sure.
From the application, there's a photograph?
Photograph, would you be able to point out your house?
So this is, oh yeah, here's my house, right there with the pool.
Right there, okay. So the first one off of Joppa Hill Road?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this application, either for or against it, that hasn't already spoken? Attorney Connell, would you like to speak to any of the items that were brought up?
Yes, if I may. Quickly at my notes, again, I understand that the details of what happens in an animal processing facility, if one focuses on that, can be emotionally upsetting to some people. But we're talking here about a use that is permitted by special exception, and we are talking about the character of the neighborhood, and unfortunately, we've heard some testimony that seem to be per se, because anyone lives here, we can't have this use. And I would encourage the board to have a more open mind than that in conformance with the zoning ordinance, where this is a permitted use in the agricultural district, and that we are given the opportunity to show that we can ameliorate the impacts that might go off-site. And it's a little surprising to hear claims of the use going on before the use is there. Again, I can understand that people worry about these things, and sometimes that affects what they see and hear. But again, we are talking about a 400-foot distance plus from our client's property to the Burke Dale Road properties, including the first houses on Joppa Hill Road, which is one of the applicant, I mean, one of the people who's testified. Again, for the variance application, our purpose is trying to make that use as condensed as possible in the center of the lot, to keep it as far from both potential residential neighbors, both on that undeveloped land and the Burke Dale and Joppa Hill properties to the south. Also keeping in mind the possible Vinnie, Vinnie single-family home that might go in on the property to the north. So the variance is actually a means to try to further reduce the impact of this use rather than to harm the neighbors. And I would ask you to look at the variance in that perspective, and it's the variance standard that calls into play whether there's any effect on the property values of the surrounding neighbors. And again, the variance is very narrow here. It's only, is it better to have these two uses on a single lot, or to force a subdivision to divide this four acres into two parcels? Because we are talking about the lot size of a minimum lot size in an agricultural district, we're talking about the minimal lot size, I mean, excuse me, the minimal facility size for an animal processing facility, which is permitted by the Bedford zoning, excuse me, the Goffstown zoning ordinance.
I'm gonna ask a couple of questions before I go off on that.
Sure.
So, so is there, if we're to deny this variance and special exception, I mean, simply, is there no, no, you know, is there a no? I mean, is the only, is the alternative to go to subdivision? And I'm trying to figure out, how realistic is this subdivision option? Not that, again, not saying I'm pushing you in that direction, I'm just saying, is it really reasonable, based on the configuration of the property, the requirements for subdivision, setbacks, all of the rules that are required, that would then would, you'd have to face, is it a realistic option to do, to state, or, because I'm having trouble to say, if we're to find the merits of this application, based on this property, based on the five criteria for variance, five criteria for special exception, that we find that it's a no, I mean, is it a default that you're gonna go to, well, then, then we subdivide? You know, I guess I'm trying to just, I mean, you believe that there is, we can do this, that there is a realistic method of creating this animal processing facility from this current property? If we subdivide it and we can still do what we wanna do, it would just have to be subdivided?
I'm saying there's a possibility. I'm not a surveyor, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, saying you would end up with two oddly configured lots, and that's not the ideal giving location of the house. And that's why we're seeking the variance as a better means for having this use on the four acres in the agricultural district. So, no, we don't wanna go that route. Just because it might be theoretical, theoretically possible, I don't think it makes sense from a planning perspective, and would much prefer the route that we're going. But I think it does require the ZBA to really distinguish, even though a lot of this comes together in terms of how we're proposing to limit the use as a reasonable use under the variance application, also carries into the special exception application, because we also wanna show that we're really not trying to do this in a manner that would alter the character of the neighborhood, that the perceived diminution of value is really only a legal issue in the variance application, and that's where the variance application should have the opposite effect. Because it allows that use to be more concentrated and to increase the buffer from all of the neighboring properties that, you know, don't have houses now, but may have houses in the future.
So you're getting into my second part of the question, is if, if the ZBA approves this, Brian, does this go to the planning board?
It does. It would go to a site plan approval process with the planning board.
So the applicant has not put it in their criteria, the configuration, or, you know, they're saying, we wanna locate the barn here and locate the pen here and try and figure the garage into a slaughter facility faced here. We may say, oh, okay, it's not in here, but that is a planning board, site plan issue that could come into conflict with an approval that we have. And we, are we holding them? Are we limiting what they're doing?
I wouldn't say that what they're asking for would limit what they're doing, what the planning board would do. The fact that they're not asking for any type, any type of setback, you know, changes or variances, really makes it a little bit more of a fluid process for them to ask for this generally, and not have a specific plan in place. And then when they get to the planning board, they have their specific plan in place, and that's what the planning board approves.
Does the planning board consider and do work to ameliorate smells, sounds, flows?
Yes.
So we may say, we believe that those things can be ameliorated, but it's really up to the planning board to help the applicant make that happen.
I would say it's up to both of you. I mean, the zoning board can incorporate these proposed restrictions that the applicant has put forth, and that, I think these are, some of them are general in nature, some of them are specific. The planning board could then get more specific, or if the zoning board wants to look at these and amend these and get more specific themselves, I think that's well within their realm of possibility as well.
Okay.
Right, and one of the things that I had requested in the proposed vote in both ways was that we, you know, because again, this is a necessary first step before we can get to the planning board, and that's why we really need the input of the ZBA before going to the next planning stage of actually locating the building precisely, and the other improvements, and what we would propose, and clearly, I did hear very loudly and clearly that, you know, from the south, and certainly that's shown by the aerial view, that there's a lot of deciduous trees that the property to the south can see the house. We are gonna propose, you know, some evergreen screening on that side, too. And what I'm getting at is that those kind of details will be included in the site plan, but we have to get through this first hurdle and get all of the major components, is what I've tried to do in making sure that this board is looking at and addressing what can be specified in the conditions, and they will be ongoing conditions. And that's part of the order that I'm requesting, is to recognize most of the conditions will be ongoing conditions for the operation of this property. That we're going to need time to get a site plan, you know, the, your ordinance says that all the conditions on the special exception must be complied with within six months. And by their very nature, we're talking mainly about conditions that will be ongoing. And so what I've suggested is requiring that we file for site plan review within six months, and that we meet the requirement of then starting substantial construction within six weeks, excuse me, two years of the site plan review approval. But the very, you know, the meat of these conditions are intended to be ongoing conditions, where there was concern expressed this evening about, not a lot of faith in our federal government, though, we're, that does worry me a little bit, too, but we're going to need the federal inspectors here, because that is part of the USDA process. So we're gonna have to be hounding them to be able to have an operating facility. But I think people at this point in time tend to have a little bit more faith sometimes in the local government, and the conditions imposed on this use locally will be a means of protecting the residents of both Goffstown and Bedford, and we recognize the need for such conditions. And that's, and again, I think I may have left out a condition that they, if you want to impose a condition specifically, that we meet the procedures for Halaal meats that would assure the quieter processing of animals. Again, we're fine with that. I think I may have overlooked that, but we certainly talked about that today, because the intent is trying to ameliorate the possible noise that could be heard. The other, you know, mechanical noises will be within the buildings. So I think we have taken steps to reduce that noise, we'll take steps to reduce the visibility. Frankly, this use, except for all the publicity that, is a part unfortunately of the approval process inherently, we are hoping for an operation that will not be very known once it's in operation, other than the people who actually use it. That's why we included specifically no signage. We're not looking for a use that stands out in the neighborhood. I know that is difficult to accept when people are thinking about what's going on on the property when we're proposing a meat processing facility. But we wanna conduct it in a way that minimizes anybody having to think about that.
Okay. I know I cut you off, so any other comments?
And like you say, and there were some different testimony about the use of Joppahill Road and how that might be approved. Again, I would expect, in my experience in the site plan review process, that that's something that could be reviewed a little bit more carefully in that process, and it would go to public works, I would assume, to look at what the traffic uses are, and we can explore that further. But again, our expectation and our client's experience is that he has seen other trucks on that road and think that right now it will be sufficient. But again, we're open to the planning process, potentially looking at that a little bit more.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
I might have one, something that just dawned on me.
If there are any other questions, can I help me?
Mr. Loopy has a question.
I have one, and it kind of stems from my experience in this area. I've been in Goffstown for about 20 years and spend a decent amount of time outdoors, and especially in this area. You know, Goffstown has come a long way, and a lot of it's modernizing, but there's some other things that are happening, too. Has your client put any thought into animals that he doesn't want in the facility? And I address this because we now, and because of my experiences outdoors and my relationship with fish and game, I know now that there's bear and coyote in that area. And although a lot of the smells that would come from this, a facility like this aren't perceivable to the human nose, they would be very much so to a wild animal, a dog, a bear, or something like that. Has he put any thought into the site plan as far as keeping these type of animals out?
If I may, I'd like to say that we've been living in the same property for almost seven years. And we do see some coyotes passing by and so on and so on. But what we're trying to do is trying to keep the property clean, keep everything away from, we, just like we live, trash outside, but we keep them close so no wild animal comes and take, eat anything from the trash. So we will do that continuously and make sure that everything is clean so no wild animal will come around and...
I was noticing in the diagrams where your processing plant, as far as blood and things like that, that's all kept internal? None of that would be exposed to the outside air?
Absolutely none.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's, so that follows on, I know you're not rehearing what we said in 2008, but, you know, there we talked about flows and, you know, septic systems and all that. It's all going to be an internal process, storage tanks, people come to remove those things, refrigerated things, not stuff lined up. So there's a lot less...
Environmental.
Environmental impact, I guess is the thing, yeah, in this application.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, the holding tank that we are proposing to install is approved by the Department of Environment here in, from New Hampshire. So it's within the standard and...
That they have to, they inspect? Is there an inspection requirement or certification?
Yeah, certification, yes. We have already notified, I mean, they already approved it, it's not...
Okay.
And if I can follow on that, or the size of the tank you would propose to install would be something like a 5,000 gallon tank that's outlined in the lawyer's handout here?
Yes.
How, and because of my lack of knowledge in this, the frequency that these tanks and waste products, storage facilities would have to be serviced based on the amount of animals that you're going to put through this facility, how often is that going to need to happen? Once a week, twice a week, every day?
Once a week, according to the company that...
Based on your utilization?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
And that would be both for the liquid waste, the gray water, and the other portions of the carcass, the pelts, the tendons, the other inedible parts that wouldn't get used?
No, only for the liquids. But as far as the carcass and stuff, we will, we will transport it to the companies called Baker Commodity in Ballerica, Massachusetts. And there's a lot of companies that, they actually pay for this.
They're a commercial, a rendering type firm?
Yes, right.
Is this something that you pay for by weight, by volume?
No, actually, some companies, they pay you to take the product.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they recycle it, they use it for fertilizers, and there's a lot of stuff that they can use.
Yeah, I think biodiesel, right? There's a big thing where people go to restaurants and buy the...
Yes.
My thinking is, based on volume, the size of the vehicles, I mean, a 5,000 gallon tanker is going to be a fairly, you know, substantial vehicle, and if you're going to be moving two tons of waste product as far as, you know, bone and unusable meat and product like that, it's going to have to be a fairly substantial vehicle, no?
It will be practical for us to move it because it will be cheaper for us to move it.
For you to move them?
Yes, sir.
So you will have to provide the vehicle?
We have to move them, and we have to be able to do them, especially when it comes to carcasses, we have to move them within 24 hours because we don't want to accumulate so much.
Yeah.
And it will be, you know, again, my kids and my family, everybody's living there, so we want to make sure that it's going to be within the standard.
All right, any good? Thank you, Mr. Dunphy.
Thank you, sir.
Any last, is that it, attorney call?
Yes, unless you have further questions.
So for the board...
I do have one. I started to ask it before I did. As far as the facility Mr. Applicator proposes to build, are we talking about raise and build a new structure, or are we talking about building on the skeleton of the existing garage building?
The plan now, as I understand it, is to use the existing garage facility and to go towards the house with that facility.
So to make additions to that without tearing it down?
That's right, expand from that existing facility.
Just a minute, just a minute.
And again, another clarification there, again, is trying to orient it towards the barn as well, to be able to use the barn for the traditional holding of the live livestock before they're processed in the facility. That would be basically what it's now, the independent separate garage facility.
In other words, possibly to make something where you have a direct line from one to the other.
Trying, again, make it compact to concentrate the use rather than, you know, make it over from more of the land.
Okay. Mr. Dunphy, you had a comment?
Is it possible to make an additional comment, given the fact that the applicant is providing a kind of summary of some of the concerns that we're reading?
Is it new information?
It's a summary.
No. If it's the same point you've already had. Okay, for the board, we have a lot of information that was presented to us tonight as far as new handouts and things. We probably weren't going to deliberate tonight on this, or it wouldn't be now anyhow. Is there any questions that you have for the applicant that were not addressed tonight that you want them to answer? I'm looking at leaving the public hearing open. What's the thought of that?
That's what I would suggest. We may have questions after we digest.
Yeah, and there's a great deal of material to be digested here.
Is there anything specific that you know that they have, may not have addressed that you would want them to think about before they came back next meeting?
Give me a moment.
Okay. I have one or two things, maybe, so. My couple things are, is, do we believe, I'm trying to do, it's a public hearing aspect, is it, do we need the applicant to address the, to address again, maybe, in more depth, the diminution of property values? And the other point I had was, I'm still not sure that they even completely understand the number and size of vehicles that are going to be going on this road, and is it considered a significant change in that it would need to be, you know, it would create a hazard or a nuisance? It's one thing to know your traffic counts, and it could be high, in cases we've seen before, but if it's not, you know, doesn't change it much, or whatever, it all comes down to, it's a decision we have to make. But in this case, I've never, I've not seen any hard numbers, I'm not seeing any sizes or frequency. It's kind of general comments. Is there anything?
Yeah, I, in reviewing my notes, that's, I think, traffic and the change in the type of vehicles that would be going in and out of the property in conjunction with this needs to, it needs more information than just the general, you know, this is what we think it's going to be. I think we need more detail.
I actually, in fact, I was on the road today, and at the moment, it's beautiful. But I've also been on it in the winter, and it's, can be pretty rugged.
So, I mean, we shouldn't be in a situation where we're telling them what they need to present to us, but if we leave the public hearing open...
It would be nice to have that information.
If they had a more concrete, no, what do you think?
No, I think that's wise.
Those two things, anything else? So I'd say, I'll make a motion that we want to continue the public hearing of this application with the public hearing open to the next meeting, which is... Fill out the calendar.
Get their phone.
When's the date of our August meeting?
August 2nd.
Looks like August 2nd.
You beat me.
August 2nd.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue this public hearing with public hearing open to this August 2nd meeting, and there was a second to that. Any discussion? And it gives us time to digest the materials as presented. Public hearing is still open, so if there was new information or we had questions for the applicant or any of the abutters, we could hear it then. Any discussion of that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, Ripstein? Okay. The question I'm going to have, Brian, is we are missing Joanne and Kathy. We'll have to address it when they show up next time, but more importantly, is getting them the materials, copies of the handouts that were provided tonight.
We have a stack of it over there, right?
Yeah, and I'm sure there's enough copies of everything there.
There may not be, but there's at least one of everything so that copies can be made at once here.
And if they read the minutes or watch DVD, they can still participate.
And I can ask the applicant to leave me that whole pile of file paperwork over there.
And, Mr. Chairman, just as an advisory, looking at my schedule, I have a potential conflict on that date.
Okay.
I'll do everything that I can to avoid it, particularly given, you know...
It's the nature of this board.
...the quorum, but I'll do what I can and see if I can make it.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, any comment or, or not comment, but any question on the continuation to the August 2nd meeting?
Mr. Dunphy, a question on the August 2nd hearing. Do you anticipate then additional information presented?
The public hearing is still open?
Yes.
We may have questions from the materials that we have in front of us and the two comments that we made of, you know, information that we're probably interested in hearing.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, that's it for that application?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to the next application to at least start it. How is everybody's doing this schedule?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
About a two-minute break, a pot of water.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andrew, we're going to take a five-minute break.
You're a trip on it.
Let's be back.